Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular council meeting for February 4th, 2025, 7:11 PM. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members, please. Thank you, my V.C. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Upal.
Present.
Mayor Potem Samra.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, all councilmembers and mayor are in attendance.
Thank you. Close session announcements.
No reportable actions at this time, Mr. Mayor, but the closed session item was continued to the end of the council meeting, so the council will be reconvening into closed session at the end of this meeting.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to request that the item number from the consent, number two be pulled. I will be abstaining from that due to advice of the attorney.
Okay, so we're going to pull that item separately?
Yeah, just so for separate, that way.
Yes, okay.
And also, I would like to move item number 15 before the consent, please.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Item number 15, I'd like to move that before the consent.
Before the consent?
Yes. Either before or after the words?
I would, personally, I would prefer to keep it where it's at, but it's up to the council, the majority of the council.
Does anybody want to second that?
I'll second that. So we have a motion on the floor, Mayor Potem, and then a second by Councilman Roth. Roll call, please.
To before the consent?
Roll call, Councilmember Ross.
Yes.
Councilmember Upal.
No.
Mayor Potem Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
No.
Motion failed by a vote of 2-2.
Thank you. And then, before I move on, I think also for item number six, we're going to pull that separately from consent agenda to allow Mr. Roth to recuse himself, okay? So we'll pull two and six.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Another proposed change to the agenda?
Yes.
Can we please pull, for item nine, under discussion and potential action items, can we please remove the portion related to Gilton's franchise fee and separate that from the rest of the item? So have the Gilton franchise fee discussion be a standalone discussion, and then the other aspect of the item related to mid-year budget appropriations and establishing a sergeant position stay coupled together?
Roy?
Because it's agendized already, it wouldn't be a Brown Act issue. We're just separating those two items, so they're both still being considered. They're just being considered independent, so there's no Brown Act issue with the separation. It'd be at council's discretion.
If council's okay with it, I'd like to motion to remove the Gilton franchise fee from item nine and have it be a standalone item, and have the rest of item nine be considered as agendized.
I have no problem with that. So we have majority so far?
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Upal, second by Mayor Moran. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Ross.
Yes.
Councilmember Upal.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 4-0.
Counsel, is there anything else? Seeing none, we're going to... Continue with citizen comments at this time. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item not on the agenda. Members of the public who are recognized by the mayor should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening. Is there any citizen comments on any items not on the agenda? Anyone, is there anyone on the phone? Hearing none, is there anyone in the chamber? Stay forward, state your name for the record.
Melissa Kacho, Jacob Merlin Foundation. Today, I'm not here to talk about my foundation. I'm going to read off this because I'm quite nervous. I am here to request safety on Main Street. On January 23rd at 7:00 PM, just two days after my grandbaby was born, she was involved in a serious car accident in front of our house. Those who know me know I was furious, I would be furious, but I was away on a trip at the time. Not to throw shade on the Livingston Police Department, but also coming from generational trauma, it was disheartening to see my son-in-law racially profiled immediately after the accident. The officer did come back and apologize, but the damage was done. As a public officer, you have a standard to uphold, and we all deserve respect. I'm requesting safety on Main Street. The left side of Main Street has no streetlights between F and Park. Less than an hour ago, there was an accident on that same street in that same spot. According to some birdie that was sitting in my ear, there's no power on that street, so I don't have any power at my house right now. I'm requesting streetlights be put on the left side of the streets. It's been 100 years that that side has no light. It's time for a change. The youth often walk down that street after sports, and they have to stop for the traffic. The traffic does not see them, they don't stop. Me breaking that generational trauma, I hold my children to a higher standard. My kids are required to have a driver's license, unlike the distracted girl who was driving that day that she hit my grandbaby, who is, by the way, okay. Her not having a license doesn't have anything to do with the lights, but I just know that not all parents hold their kids to those high standards as me. So we need to take precautionary measures and light up that side of the street. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Quick question. When you say, I think I know which side you're talking about, but coming northbound or...
I'm talking left side going towards Peach, so when we're at, going that way.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other additional citizen comments in the chamber at this time? Seeing none, closing the citizen comments at this time. Next, we have announcements and reports. Supervisor Jim Pacheco, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Moran and city council members. Just a couple of things. This last week, the border supervisors approved some ordinances regarding to SB 1383 to be in compliance, and unfortunately, some of these are going to include some rate increases for our garbage customers that are in the county, so that's just something to look to in the future. And also, as we can see, there's rain outside and some weather, but we received some information from our Public Works Department, and they will be out doing some proactive work. They assured us that there's nothing catastrophic that's coming, but they will have sandbag locations, and they'll be looking at different areas that are prone to flooding and make sure that those areas are going to be taken care of. And if anybody has any concerns about any weather-related issues, please either give me a call, you can give the county a call, and we'll address those issues. And that's all I have now, unless anybody has any questions about anything.
Thank you. Counsel, anything, anyone? Just one comment, and I know that this has been, it's been there for a long time, and it's, but you know, you're here today, and I know this is something that was addressed to the county before. The cross-section of West Side and, I think, is Robin? It's that little intersection, it's not a whole lot, but just the four-way stop sign area. Yeah, that is just maybe, if we can put it on your radar, radar now that you're there, and then, you know, see if we can bring that up to, I don't know, somebody at the county and see if... The one, there's one side of the street, because there's a lot of big trucks driving through there, and it's not a whole lot, but it's just right at the intersection.
Is it a flooding issue or a traffic issue?
No, it's just the road is very worn out, you know, and if it can be done before the next winter, it'd probably be better, the way it gets fixed on time to allow it to...
Yes, okay. I'll bring it up with our Public Works and our Road Commissioner.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel.
All right, thanks. Next, city staff announcements and reports. Happy Beans.
So, Mayor, as Happy is walking up here, I just wanted to get a couple of things on the council's radar and then let the community know. Executed in agreement with Happy today, as of today, he is now our Finance Director/Assistant City Manager, so I wanted to congratulate Happy. One thing that I will say is this didn't come easy. What I will say is that when I arrived, the city was delayed on its audits by a couple of years, and had some conversations with Happy about, hey, how are we going to get to this place where the city can be in a place to have its audits updated and not have delayed budgets? And so Happy rose to the occasion successfully, has gotten us back on track to get our audits back on track as most normal cities. And I just really want to thank Happy for the work that he's done to lead the finance team in getting us to this point, and it wasn't something that was by any means easy, but he dedicated himself to get it done, and as a result, he's now our Finance Director/Assistant City Manager. So thank you, Happy, for everything that you've done for the city to make sure that its finances have been moving in the right direction, so thank you.
Thank you. So today, I'll be going over just a brief overview of the Finance Division on what we do at City Hall. So just some responsibility of the city that we do in the Finance Department. We prepare the budget, revenue billing for our UBSs, our ARs, accounts receivable, accounts payable, collections, pay our employees, pay our vendors, debt administration, investments, transit, occupancy tax, and business licenses, fixed assets, financial reporting, and audits. Continuation, basically, our annual workload. We have eight employees in the Finance Department. We kind of run almost 500 business licenses, around 3,500 utility accounts, 45,000 payments received, checks written to vendors around 2,500, bi-weekly employee paydays, direct deposits, checks around 2,260 annually. Number of accounts of different various funds that the Finance Department is in charge of and runs is at 41. 2024, 2025 budget revenues are $32 million, expenses are $35 million, and the difference of $3 million are basically our CFP projects that we're currently working on. Our audits, as Christopher mentioned, we were kind of behind in the audits with a lot of work with myself and staff. We didn't get everything up to date. Expected issuance for our 2024 audit should be March of 2025. Immediately after that, we are going to kind of go back-to-back and start on our 2425 audit, which should be starting around 2025. Immediately after that, we are gonna kind of go back-to-back and start on our twenty-four twenty-five audit, which should be starting around December twenty-five. Annual budget, operating and capital budget for twenty-five twenty-six. Instructions have been sent out to the department heads. Our Springbrook Extended Budget Module is open for them to start budgeting for their next fiscal year's budget. Expected delivery to date to council will be May of twenty twenty-five, so that's expectation for the annual budget. But that's a quick overview. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, thank you for that. Well, first of all, congratulations. I think the majority of the council has been here long enough to be able to see a lot of the work that you have been doing for the last couple of years, or year and a half or so. And congratulations, and, and just make sure that, keep it, keep it up. All right, Counsel, any questions?
Mayor, I know that we don't have Police Chief Schiff listed here, but we did have an incident. Wanted to, if it was okay with the mayor and the council, for Chief Schiff to provide an update to the mayor and council and the community about an incident, if that's okay, Mayor.
Yes, okay, yes, of course.
Councilmembers, thank you for agreeing to allow me to speak. At two thirty-five yesterday afternoon, a disturbed individual came into the foyer station, into the foyer of the Livingston Police Department station. He stood passively by while two elderly women conducted business at our window. As they stepped away, he pulled out a very large butcher knife and hacked at the window where our dispatcher was on the far side of the plexiglass window, putting several deep gouges into the window. The dispatcher screamed for help. There were three officers, including myself, present. We came out. We were able to contain the individual in our lobby. In the middle of this, a woman with a baby carriage had come in the door. She managed to get out. We were able to pull her out, shut the door, lock them in. For the next two hours, we did what was called time and distancing. If you've kind of been paying attention to police work over the last number of years, we've learned to, with people with psychological problems, get as much distance as we could and take as much time as we could. After two hours, we were able to calm him down enough to set down the knife. We made an arrangement where he could go to the door and meet with somebody. When he did that, we were able to take the knife into possession, take him into possession, and transfer him to the county mental health facility. I'm making a very serious situation. I'm giving you a very serious situation, a very small amount of time. It took a great deal of patience on everyone's part to be able to stand off for two hours, keeping in mind that our guns were drawn, we had our tasers out, we were attempting to use less lethal if necessary, lethal as a last resort. The situation could not have abated itself any more positive than it did. And I also want to point out, it was not just Livingston Police Department. It was all of our civilian workers, our dispatchers, our dispatcher supervisor, and in particular, we would not have nearly had that kind of success. We, the person did not speak English, and we tried to use a phone translator, and that didn't work out. So too much to our credit and his credit, your finance manager stepped forward and translated for us for about an hour and forty-five minutes, helped us talk him down, helped us relax him, and with our joint cooperation, it ended successfully. So I just wanted to personally tell you about that. It may spread throughout the neighborhood. We're welcome to answer any questions that you might have about the incident.
Well, first of all, well, thank you and, you know, for having, I guess, in a way, a successful outcome without getting anybody hurt. But, and also for providing counsel for an updated report. I think it's important also for the community to know and understand what are some of the things that are going on out there, and what are some of the things that you guys are doing and what you guys are trained to do. And, and then that probably could also be a good learning opportunity to figure out if there's additional training that needs to be done that we don't have yet, and for that to be considered by your department, you know, and obviously, if there's any additional need, there's always the city manager's office that can be reached out to. So, good job.
This afternoon, we had a debrief on the situation. We have identified several training needs, and there is no question that we need to improve our training.
Counsel, any comments? And the last thing I want to say to Happy, that's what you call on the fine print, on the bottom of your contract probably says, plus other duties. That was probably one of those, right?
It was way above and beyond the call of duty to just be put in a situation that he's not trained for, to have volunteered freely and to have put in the amount of time at the tension level that we were at was just phenomenal, and we could never express enough gratitude. Anyway, thank you.
Mayor, I wanted to add something. Really wanted to thank the men and women of the Livingston Police Department, dispatchers, all of our officers, everybody that was involved, also Happy for coming in and assisting with that situation. This could have ended a lot worse, and I saw some of the footage. Want to thank Chief Schiff for inviting me to be a part of that debrief today. They did an amazing job. We so often hear about tragedies with them, very similar instances where individuals have weapons and they end out badly. And we very rarely hear about these huge success stories where the suspect or the individual was apprehended, no harm to the individual, and our officers did an incredible job. And then lastly, I want to thank Chief Schiff for bringing everybody together, and I think you were very transparent about, hey, look, it ended very well, but no situation is perfect, and I think you created the environment today, which allowed officers to speak very freely about that and really talk about the improvements that could be done differently that the public largely will not even recognize. But really want to thank you for striving for excellence and making the officers and all the staff really understand that it was a great outcome. However, there's always things that we could do differently and do things better. So I really want to thank your leadership, Chief Schiff. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have City Manager announcements and reports. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to really thank the community for allowing me to come here and serve the community. It's been a great time, moving a lot of these projects forward. Really want to thank the mayor and the council for moving a lot of these projects forward. I did include an update related to a lot of the highlights that we had over the last two years. I would be remiss if I didn't really give credit to the people that actually did this work, and it's all the employees of the City of Livingston. So all of the accomplishments that were identified there wouldn't be done if it weren't for the employees of the City of Livingston. So all the credit goes to them. I think the agency is in a much better position than it was when I first arrived, and I'm hoping that a lot of the momentum that's been built over the last couple of years continues to move forward. With that being said, in complete transparency, I also felt that it was important to show the things that should continue to be prioritized for the community, and that's why I included the items that I included in the backup for today. So really, again, my extreme appreciation to the residents of the community, the business owners, everybody that I've talked to. I know Blaine and I had pretty frequent conversations. I want to thank you for your involvement, Blaine. Diego, looking out in the community or out in the crowd, and I know there's so many people out here that have, are invested, literally, with funding in the community that I know want to see the community do very well. So again, Mayor and Counsel, thank you. Really want to thank the community and just my heartfelt appreciation to everybody here. Everyone has been incredible. Arms wide open and the staff, the management team. I know that when I first started, it was probably a little difficult to see a new person coming in, but I think at the end of the day, everyone has grown immensely and done an incredible job, and I can't thank the management team enough. So thank you all. You've done amazing work, and I can't thank you enough. So thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you for that, but I was expecting and hoping that you would mention some of the listed items, because not everybody out there in the community probably read the agenda, and people watching, they can at least have an idea on what are some of those items that you're talking about. I know you, there's a list of about fifty-five different items, plus a nice list of items that you were, you're recommending for council and, and staff to continue looking at and working towards, but I, I think it's, it would be appropriate for at least to give those people that are watching and they're not, you know, reading the agenda, but just to give them an idea, if you don't mind.
Sure, Mayor. So I'll provide a synopsis of those. Over the last two years, some of the notable achievements, a one million dollar grant from Senator Caballero for water infrastructure, the one-year C I P action plan developed and adopted by the mayor and council in fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four and fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four and fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five budget delivered on time and balanced. The first mid-year budget review was presented to the council on February twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Tonight, Happy will go through this fiscal year mid-year budget. Obviously, because of the sensitivity, multiple significant personnel matters resolved. The council is aware of those. P D dispatch was fully staffed in twenty twenty-four. The general plan amendment with mintier harness approved by the council. M C A G one voice delegation visit occurred in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, which I was a part of in the lead for the development of those items. The personnel and labor attorney was retained in twenty twenty-three to assist with the personnel matters. Recruiter was retained for Police Chief, and our Police Chief Schiff was hired in twenty twenty-four. The city attorney R F P was developed. Interviews were conducted by the council on the new city attorney, and City Attorney Santos was selected in twenty twenty-three. The Fourth of July fireworks show back, was back on again after a pause due to COVID. Well eight A is under construction. Baker Tilly is under contract to assist with master tax sharing agreement discussions. The long-term financial model was developed and presented to the ad hoc. Policy issues identified by the consultant were provided by the, or was provided to the tax sharing ad hoc. The calorie cycle audit and action plan addressed due to the city's non-compliance issues, and that item was resolved. Financial audits were on track after years of falling behind. Community barbecue with the P D kicked off, which was a great event. Sister City was kicked off with proper resolutions in place and visits in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. One of my most proudest accomplishments here, the employment engagement activity committee that coordinated events for employees, including Thanksgiving employee appreciation lunches, Christmas holiday events, employee engagement committee, established made up of purely employees to highlight the great work and the great employees that we have. A new building inspection plan check firm and development services technician was brought on board, providing consistent coverage for the development community. Resolution to wastewater vendor services agreement and performance issues resolved. Live streaming of planning commission meetings, the train system and solar power implemented, was implemented and functional after years of non-functionality. Solid waste consultant was retained to evaluate solid waste proposals, which were provided to the council. Preliminary information related to the sales tax items, including potential revenues, polling firm, and other items brought forward to the council for direction in twenty twenty-four. And the city clerk's office, part-time personnel have been added to deal with the significant workload. The new position created by council and approved to bring on board a Assistant to the City Manager Deputy City Clerk, adopted by the council, and we've got the wonderful Monica that is fulfilling that role. An ordinance was adopted, lawfully allowing the mayor and council to delegate the city clerk's responsibilities to staff. Now, the largest flurry seal project was awarded and completed in the city. Generator replacement for Public Works was authorized by the council and is now functional over it, our Public Works wastewater facility. County paving project, want to thank former supervisor Rodrigo Espinoza to bring that collaboration together. M O U was adopted by the council and the project was completed. Code compliance program was initiated, included comprehensive spay neuter program. I don't see Eddie here, but he's the one that leads up that for us. Another accomplishment, a horse-mounted M O U was finalized after decades of having incredible Joe Cruz here and without an agreement, and he's done an incredible job, and we're, it's a real asset for the City of Livingston. Fire improvements, including new training devices, tools, equipment replacement, and other investments for our P C Fs as well as our equipment in our station. New lights in Max Foster Basin for youth, which created additional recreation programming opportunities and eliminating the need to have portable lights towed back and forth. New Police Department gym for Police Department employees to take care of their physical health, paid for by a grant. Radar tool utilized by P D deployed, purchased. Little Giants Recreation Program offered to residents, an incredible program. The Office three sixty-five migration was completed, eighteen-month fire services agreement adopted by the city council. The first agreement for fire services in decades for the City of Livingston. Really want to thank the council for that. And with that, a higher level of staffing provided at our fire station. The one percent special sales tax measure was adopted by the voters of Livingston. Obviously, the council authorized that to go before the voters. The education firm, there was an education firm retained by the city to educate the voters on the importance of Measure L. I think they did have a part in educating the residents. Online employee onboarding being finalized by H R. Really want to give a shout out to R C for that. The Agenda Management System Agreement approved by the council, which will modernize our agenda management process. Want to thank Monica for bringing that to the council. One-year M O Us with all bargaining groups approved, with the exception of two that will be before the council tonight, which I'm hopeful that the council will approve. New vehicles and the Police Department and Public Works. For the first council candidate orientation was hosted by staff in twenty twenty-four. Defensive driver training provided to Public Works staff in twenty twenty-five. General Plan Workshop for the community hosted in twenty twenty-four. Grant writing firm retained by the city in twenty twenty-four. Twenty-seven million dollars worth of infrastructure grant funded, grant funding accepted by the council, pending final agreement by the city council. Final ARPA project funding committed by the city council. Solar lighting improvements installed in city council chambers, parking lot, and city hall, resulting in increased lighting for residents and staff at city hall funded by grant funds, and again, want to thank former county supervisor Espinoza for that. Architectural firm, design firm for the Recplex has been retained and contract was awarded. New Dutch Brothers constructed and opened for business in twenty twenty-four. And then contract for vendor to livestream city council meetings adopted by the city council, ensuring continuity of video streaming services for city council regular and special meetings, which was, I think, adopted by the council or approved by the council last month. So there are still a number of items to be focused on. I won't go through all those items, but I would say that, you know, one of the big things that remains on the council's radar that I could hope, I hope that there's enough emphasis to continue moving these items forward is the city's infrastructure, particularly the water infrastructure. I'm hoping that that, the push and the momentum to continue moving those projects forward and not only, you know, being reactive and not just focusing in on what we can do right now, but really talking about what the city, what the city can do to put itself in a position to really allow for the growth of the community to occur. The general plan update, all those things that need to happen, that takes years to bring on new wells. Those conversations, I hope, continue to happen right now so that the city can be in a position much better than what it is right now, so that it can do the things that are necessary to bring investment to the community. So I hope that covers the things that were high-level updates, but then also would encourage people to reference the memo in terms of what are the items that are left to be done for the City of Livingston. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, so, and then for people that are watching, you can go to page eight and nine and ten. That continues listing some of the items that that hopefully that are recommended for the, for the council to continue working with and working on. And so it's definitely, it's, and to be honest with you, and I think I said this before, initially, when, when we went through the process of looking and reviewing, I think it was twenty-two applicants at that time, and twenty-two, twenty-four applicants last time that, that council at that time went through along with assistance of city staff. And initially, honestly, at that time, the of, uh, city staff. And initially, honestly, at that time, there were so many things going on to where I think part of the conversation was, let's just hope that whoever we find to come into the city of Livingston just keeps the boat afloat, because there were so many things going on and, uh, you know, um, that, but the bottom, my point is that, that Mr. Lopez, that not only, he exceeded my expectations, you know, uh, I was just hoping at that time to just help us keep the boat afloat while the council tried to fix some of the issues that were left behind at that time. And, um, I, you know, I can, I can honestly say that, uh, uh, Mr. Lopez exceeded my expectations, uh, way more than, uh, I would have ever expected. Uh, but it's because he was open-minded, he was open to work. Uh, um, I think that almost every time that I would, uh, come into city hall to have a meeting, you know, we would probably end up leaving, um, s, city hall, uh, like a, after seven. Um, and so, and then just from talking to, to, uh, staff, uh, I know that Mr. Lopez would always be working late, uh, in the office. And that is one of the ways of how we got so many things done, uh, in the last year and a half, almost two years. Um, and, uh, definitely I very appreciative and, uh, with everything that was accomplished and, uh, the recommendations and the list of items that we still are not done yet, but, uh, most of them are, and some of them are, um, in the works in progress. So, thank you for that. Okay. Counsel, anything else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, for me.
Yes.
Christopher, I'd just like to say it's been a pleasure working with you. Uh, I appreciate all your updates and everything that you've done for the city and our community. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Just gonna wait until the formal recognition. I know, but we may as well go now while we're on the beat. Um, obviously, like everybody else, want to thank, uh, the interim city manager for, for coming in and trying to right the boat. Um, the more I've learned about Livingston, more conversations I've had about Livingston, it's always Livingston's behind in this, or this isn't right, or that's not right. Very shaky history, seeing some of that now. And one thing I can say over the last two months that I've been able to work, uh, with the city managers, that the issues are noted. Uh, there's a very clear direction or recommendation that's coming. Uh, and then there's been a lot of energy moving forward. Um, like Mr. Moran mentioned, the work ethic, I, I definitely say is off the charts. One thing I noticed off the bat. Um, you know, I, I say this and it's almost concerning to say out loud, but it's true. I've spent more time talking to the city manager in the last two months than I have to any single family or friend, just trying to get up to speed. Um, has always said, if you need help, I'll make the commitment to do it. And I've received that entirely in the last two months. Um, wish I would have been able to learn more, but obviously, um, things are moving. I, I do appreciate all the time that's been invested, though. Obviously, we have so much work to do. There's a lot left, uh, but I feel a lot more comfortable about our direction, just given some of the recommendations that you've given. And so, thank you for your time that you've put into the city. Um, one of our coaches, shout out to Alex Gonzalez, always told us, leave the place better than you found it. And I do think that Livingston is a better place today than you found it when you came in. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Okay, next we have, uh, city council members announcements and reports. Um, council member Roth?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council member Oupal?
Just a couple things and give me a second while I scroll back up to my notes. Want to start off with a quick, uh, birthday shout out to one of my mentors, uh, one of my most helpful mentors, uh, Priya Lakareddy. Uh, she's the president of the Merced Cities School District in Merced. Um, has been a huge help to me ever since I wanted to get involved. And so, she's not watching tonight, but I'll send a link to her. Um, happy birthday to her. Uh, been at a bunch of events over the last few weeks. Um, shout out to James Moore from Regional Waste at 40 for giving me a tour of their facility. I have no idea how much goes into waste collection, but I definitely, especially in preparation for tonight's meeting, I've learned a lot. Uh, went to an MLK parade event in Merced a couple of weeks ago, uh, with my brother. I saw the mayor there as well. Um, attended the city-county relations dinner in Gustine. Monica, thank you for the quick turnaround and being able to get me out there on that. It's always good to connect, uh, with folks in the county. And I, I did want to say something that certainly not as exciting as the others. Um, I mentioned, uh, from what I've heard, Livingston has a long history of, of issues and troubles, and everybody has their own take on it. Uh, but in the time that I've been on council, um, there's certain things that I do feel that council just hasn't done a good enough job of. And the community has been very vocal about it. I just wanted to let them know that your feedback has been heard. Uh, you're gonna see more accountability, including tonight, and, uh, we are pushing in the right direction. Um, and so I just wanted to let the community know that whether it's us being laid out a closed session, or the things that you've seen, um, it's nothing that goes unacknowledged and that there are steps that are being taken to, to push us forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Protem?
Uh, nothing tonight.
Thank you. Just a few things. Um, um, just real quick, I'm not going to go too much into details, because we have a lot of things before us. Um, I attended the MLK parade in, in Merced. Uh, the Recreation Commission, uh, last week meeting, a lot, a lot of good plans. And, and Jackie, it's always a head of the game and, uh, just her big, huge department, it's always, uh, doing a good job. Um, also attended the city-county dinner in Gustine. It's always great to go back to what I call my, what I consider my hometown. You know, I grew up in Gustine. Uh, my, all of my family is still in Gustine. I'm the only one that is not there. So it's always, it's, it's always go back whenever I have an opportunity to go back to that area and, uh, and a good opportunity to, to chat with other, um, cities that are also in attendance in the county. And, um, uh, that's it. All right. So next I have, um, awards presentations and proclamations. Uh, presentation by Mayor Moran, service recognition of interim city manager, uh, Christopher Lopez. So, um, thank you, Monica, for, um, for the plaque. And you're always, I mean, I don't know what many of us would do without your support here. Um, because, so, we have a plaque, uh, in recognition for, uh, Mr. Lopez's, uh, service award, and it reads, City Livingston Service Award Presented to, uh, Christopher Lopez in honor of your unwavering dedication, integrity, and leadership to the community as interim city manager for Livingston, California, uh, 2023, 2025. And, uh, and so, uh, on behalf of the council, on behalf of the city of Livingston, um, wanna present this to you. And then, uh, hopefully someone has, uh, a camera ready for some pictures. And I think this is, uh, a good opportunity always for, for pictures. Uh, so, Mr. Lopez, thank you on behalf of the city. And, uh, you know, um, as we said earlier, as I, as I said earlier, it's, um, I think I, uh, we learned a lot, I learned a lot. Um, and, and definitely, it's, uh, it's good to see having someone come in and have a different perspective, especially coming from outside the area, uh, and, and, uh, and, and just being able to see what the city could grow into and, and really just, uh, having someone to think outside the box, uh, think of, uh, you know, even though I, I probably feel that you felt, that you saw yourself on this little island, you know, but after a while, you know, just from talking to you, you, you know, kind of learning about Livingston and Merced County and, and, and how, um, you saw this, our, our community. And, uh, so, I really appreciate your work. I think I, I said more than enough. Uh, uh, and, uh, hopefully we can keep on, um, learning from your other ventures, uh, and, um, ideas and strategies that we can continue using and implementing here in the city of Livingston for the benefit of our community. Thank you very much. So at this time for pictures, I would like to ask, uh, invite the council for, to join us for, for the picture.
I also wanted to, on behalf of some of the residents that tune in to the meetings and watch, they have, over the past two years, seen a great deal of work that you have invested into Livingston. Um, the extensive list of items that have been accomplished. And thank you so much for leaving the city of Livingston, council members and the public with what needs to be done, because that needs to be followed so that, like many of you said, we go in the positive direction for all of us. Thank you for your time that you had invested. Two years as an interim, it is super sad that this council wasn't strong enough to say, hey, Christopher needs to come on full-time. And I believe that was mentioned, or that was even agendacized for you to be on there. So, thank you for being a part of Livingston. Thank you for your willingness to continue to work with members of the community and staff. Um, so I also wanted to present this to you, and it's, uh, o'clock. Thank you for your time, Christopher Lopez, as behalf of some of the residents from the city of Livingston.
All right. Uh, next we have, uh, let's see, continue with the agenda. Conflict of interest declaration. Members of the city council will declare an actual or apparent conflict of interest before discussions or decisions about any matters in which they or anyone with whom they have a close personal relationship could directly or indirectly benefit, or where such a benefit could be perceived. Next we have the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Quick, um, for the conflicts of interest declaration, um, I just wanted to, um, announce that, uh, council member Roth will be recusing himself from item number six, um, the consideration of the Livingston Police Officers Association MOU with the city, uh, because his daughter works for, uh, works for the city and is a member of LPOA.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Next we have the consent agenda. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine or non-controversial and will be enacted by one vote unless separate action is requested by a member of the public. The city manager or city council member, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the public, city council, or city manager request that specific items be removed. Public comment on consent agenda items should be limited to three minutes per person regardless of the number of items contained within the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, items two and, um, six will be pulled, um, and then council can consider items one, three, four, and five.
Actually, it will just be three, four, and five, I believe. In, under, in, uh, yes.
Sorry, yes.
All right. So, counsel, at this time, uh, I will consider, so under consent agenda, we have items three, four, and five. Item number three, consideration of a resolution at one, authorizing the interim city manager to execute professional service agreement with Shannon Pump Company to provide product maintenance repairs to well 15 and well 17 in an amount not to exceed $208,773.23. Two, waveform of bidding requirements as outlined in section one six, one eleven dash six. And three, authorizing the finance department to make supplemental appropriation to fiscal year 2425 budget in the amount of $106,181.29 to the Water Enterprise Fund. Staff recommendation approved resolution. And just, uh, I just reminded myself, I do have a question on item number three, so I will pull item number three. Um, so, items left on the agenda, if nobody pulls them, will be item number four, consideration of a resolution, authorizing, authorizing the city, the interim city manager to execute an, an agreement with Mid, Midway Amusements for 2025, 2026, 2027, Sweet Potato Festival. Recommendation approved resolution. Item number five, consideration of a resolution adopting a, the memorandum of understanding between the city of Livingston and Supervisory's Employees Association for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, and adopting a revised comprehensive pay schedule. Staff recommendation approved resolution. So, counsel, at this time, I will entertain a motion for approval for consent agenda items four and five. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
I will second it.
I do have a motion on the floor by council member Roth, second by Mayor Protem, and at this time I will go out for public comment. Is there any, uh, public comment on items four and five on the consent agenda? Anyone on the, on the phone? Bringing it back to the chamber at 8:02, is there any citizen comments on items four and five? Seeing none, closing the, uh, uh, public comment at 8:02. Uh, roll call, please.
Roll call, council member Roth?
Yes.
Council member Oupal?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of four to zero.
All right. So we have, next we have item number two, for which, miss?
Counsel, uh, Mayor Protem, uh, Samra will be recusing himself from item number two.
Thank you. For the record, uh, council, Mayor Protem Samra has, uh, stepped out. So, item number two, consideration of an amendment to the interim city manager contract providing a 4% cost of living increase effective February 1, 2024. Recommendation approved amendment cancelled. Is there any questions? Seeing none, I will go out for public comment at this time. Is there any public comment on the phone at 8:04? Hearing none, bringing it back to, to the chamber at 8:04. Is there any citizen comments? Seeing none, closing the public comment at 8:04, bringing it back to a dice. Counsel, is there any motions?
All motion to approve.
I have a motion on the floor by council member Oupal. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Have a second on the, second on, um, on the motion by council member Roth. Roll call, please.
Roll call, council member Roth?
Yes.
Council member Oupal?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of three, zero.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, item number three, consideration of a resolution, authorizing the interim city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Shannon Pump Company to provide pro, uh, product maintenance repairs to well 15 and 17 in an amount not to exceed $208,773.23. So the question that I have is, because it's also, it's asking for, to waive the formal bidding requirements as outlined in section one dash 11 dash six. Um, so- So, I do, I, thank you, thank you, Anthony. So, I think I already know the answer, but just for, also because the same question was asked by a resident, so I want to make sure that, you know, we provide just a quick update. Normally, can you provide just a quick background or information on when, when, the question was, why are we, why are we waiving the formal bidding requirements? And then maybe you can add when those times allow for council to consider to waive the bidding process.
Yeah, right now, staff's requesting the waiving of the formal bidding process. Due to the timing of this project, if we were to implement the formal bidding process, it's going to cause a delay in completing the project, which would push the project out to warmer weather. If we push it out to warmer weather and try to complete the project, then we'll place in the system, the water system, for the liability. And we most likely wouldn't pursue the repair project at that time and would end up having to wait until fall. But on these larger projects, normal process is when it calls for over $10,000 cost, that triggers a formal bidding process, then scope is prepared, most of the time by our engineering department, and, you know, goes out to bid for advertisement, and we have a bid opening, and multiple firms are able to bid on the project. And we go with the lowest responsible and responsive bidder at that time. Any further questions?
Yeah, and so, so this project would start, like, almost right away, like, within a month?
Yeah, we have Shannon Pump just ready to, ready to go. So, as soon as we have authorization to move forward from the council, then all we've got to do is call Shannon Pump and execute the agreement and move forward.
Yeah, so, and that's similar of, to what I explained, it's, you know, without getting too much into detail, based on the urgency of the situation. But I think one of the questions that came up in my mind after this conversation with the resident was, you know, what could we have done prior to, to prevent from waiting until now to kind of be in the situation to where, oh, you know, it's, I mean, it is, it is crucial that we get it done as soon as possible, and potentially, could this have been something that we could have planned ahead of time, or, you know, or not, to allow for the, for the actual bidding process to, to take place without having to get too much, you know, without having to have the urgency as we are now? And possibly allow to provide opportunities to save some money if that was the case.
Oh, yeah, most definitely, and that's why we implemented this year's well efficiency testing, to help identify and respond to those, those maintenance concerns, to identify them on the front end instead of reacting. We're going to be, that'll be an annual maintenance service, well efficiency, so we can monitor our wells and track them and be more proactive with the well maintenance.
All right, thank you for that. Council, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So, at this time, I will make a motion to approve item number three.
I will second it.
Motion on the floor by Mayor Moran, second by Mayor Protem. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Upal.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of four to zero.
Thank you. So, next, we have item number six, and at this time, Councilmember Roth will step out. So, this is a good opportunity to, I'll go back and provide public comment for item number three. Is there any public comment on the phone? Eight, ten, bringing it back to the chamber. Anybody in the chamber with public comment in regards to item number three? Seeing none, eight, ten, closing the public comment. Thank you. Next, we have item number six, consideration of a resolution adopting the memorandum of understanding between the city of Livingston and the Police Officers Association for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, and adopting a revised comprehensive pay schedule. Staff recommendation, approved resolution. Cancel. Any questions, motions? Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, for the record, make clear that Councilmember Roth has left, Councilmember Roth has left the dais.
Thank you. So, I will go out for public comment. Is there anybody, is there any public comment on the phone in regards to item number six? Eight, eleven. Hearing none, coming back to the chamber. Is there any citizen, public comment in the chamber in regards to item number six? Seeing none, closing the public comment at eleven, at eight, eleven. Cancel. Is there any questions, motions?
All motion to approve.
I will second it.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Upal, second by Mayor Protem Samra. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth. Oh, sorry, he abstained. Councilmember Upal.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of three, zero.
At this time, we're going to ask Councilmember Roth to come back into the chamber. Next, we have items, item number seven, public hearing, consideration of a resolution to approve GPA number 2023 dash one, amending the general plan land use diagram of the city of Livingston from PF, which is public facility to HC Highway Commercial to accommodate phase two of the Mungla Development Project on property generally located on the south side of Campbell Avenue, east of Hammett Avenue, at, located at 2300 Campbell Avenue, and ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Livingston of property located at 2300 Campbell Avenue from public quasi-public facilities PF to highway service commercial C3, rezoned 2023 dash one, I'm sorry, zero one. Staff recommendation, approved resolution, and waive first reading of ordinance, open and close public comment, and approve ordinance by title only, and to be continued to the next regular city council meeting of 2/18/2025. So, at this time, I will open the public comment. Or is there a report?
So, for this item, Mr. Mayor, we would request that council continue this item because the required noticing for the adjacent property owners didn't go out. The council can consider this item in the sense that it can hear public comment on this item since members of the public were noticed, but in order to ensure that adjacent property owners get proper notice and their opportunity to speak before the council, we request that this item be continued to the next council meeting.
Yes, so, I will go out for public comment. Is there anyone on the phone in regards to this item? Eight, fourteen, hearing none, coming back to the chamber at eight, fourteen. Any citizen comments in regards to item number seven in the chamber? Seeing none, I'm closing the public comment, and then, so we just have to...
We just request a motion and a second to continue this item to the next council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I made the motion, continue to the April 18 meeting.
So, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Samra, second by Councilmember Roth. Roll call.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Upal.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of four to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have item number eight, consideration of a resolution to approve a time extension for application number 2024 dash oh one MIT number two nineteen oh three for the villages at main residential apartment community on property generally located on the east side of Main Street, south of Peach Avenue, APN number zero four seven dash two eight zero dash zero two zero, and zero forty seven dash two eighty dash zero twenty nine. Staff recommendation, approved resolution. Just like the, similar to the previous item, it is requested to continue, to be continued to the next regular council meeting of 2/18/2021.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, similar to the previous item, this item also did not have the proper notices sent to the adjacent property owners, so in order to ensure that they have their opportunity to be heard before the council and receive proper notice, we ask that that item be continued to the next council meeting on 2/18.
So, before I do ask for a motion, I will go out for public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone at eight sixteen? Anyone on the phone? Hearing none, coming back to the chamber at eight sixteen. Anyone in the chamber, public comment? Seeing none, closing the public comment at eight seventeen. Council, is there any?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before we vote on this, it's my understanding, Miguel, please correct me if I'm wrong, that there was a request via email sent out to the applicant related to this item within the last couple of weeks. Obviously, the applicant's not here tonight, but if the applicant is watching, I do ask that they honor that request and bring that information forward during the February 18 meeting when we consider this item again. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, anything else before we consider a motion? Is, what is the wish of the council?
A motion to approve.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Upal. Is there a second?
Is that a motion to approve the item or to continue?
To approve the recommendation to continue the item.
Thank you. I will second it.
Motion on the floor by Councilmember Upal, second by Mayor Protem Samra. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Upal.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of four to zero.
Next, we have discussion and potential action items.
Do you want me to help with this one, Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to council's motion earlier, item nine will be split into items nine A and nine B. Nine A would be consideration of a resolution approving the appropriation and amending the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget. Item nine B would be consideration of a resolution authorizing the finance department to move Jilton's franchise fee from the fire services fund back to the general fund, and all future franchise fees received from Jilton to be put in the general fund.
All right, okay, so we have first part of this item, item number nine, resolution approving appropriations and amending the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget. Mr. Finance Director.
I'll be going over the mid-year review, proposed 2425 budget, mid-year review. So, a little bit of a background on the budget. Council adopted, adopted the fiscal year 2425 budget on June 4 of 2024. Fiscal year runs from July 1 to June 30. The budget may be a document that may be amended during the fiscal year for various reasons, including allocating funds, for unscheduled items, actions by third parties that may impact the budget, or change in the economy that must be incorporated within our budget. A little bit of an economic update. Despite concerns over the last two years, the U.S. economy has performed well, averaging a 2.8 real growth rate over the past eight quarters. City of Livingston's property values grew by 3.7% from 2023, 24 to 24, 25, resulting in 48.6 million in new value. Change of ownership added 6 million in total value that was within the city. At the third quarter of 2024, the median sales price for Livingston detached single-family homes was around 390,000, which is a decrease of 15,000 from third quarter of 2023's median A little bit of background of our revenues and expenditures, except for the following items that I'm going to go into detail with, revenue and expenditures are as expected. Jilton's franchise fee was originally budgeted for in the general fund. By council approval, Jilton's franchise fee was moved to a new fire services fund. With this action, this caused the general fund to be out of balance by an estimate of $160,000. In the sanitation fund, no ongoing revenues are being collected to cover solid waste services provided by staff. An estimated 600,000 will be used from sanitation fund reserves. If rates are not adjusted, the sanitation fund reserves will be depleted during fiscal year 25, 26. Voters of Livingston approved Measure L in November of 2024. It is estimated that this will provide revenue of around 2.3 million for public safety to the city of Livingston. Retailers will start collecting this in April of 2025. A CIP update. The one-year CIP lays out the city's planned capital improvement projects for the fiscal year that we're currently in. Several projects will go out to bid in the next few months. As of December 31, 2024, staff has expended 1.3% of the expenditures allocated in the city's one-year CIP. Please see the list of the projects and updates for each project on the agenda packet on page 190, so that lists out the, kind of a list of what it is. So, biggest one out of the thing is our, basically, Recplex, which is estimated around 5 point some million out of there. Expenditure adjustments from the general fund. The police department will be adding a temporary sergeant position for the remainder of the fiscal year. This has no impact on our budget due to two officers currently vacancies of two officers, and then one officer that is currently in background with another agency. Notable highlights include a new patrol vehicle, cost of assistance with upcoming negotiations, and the cost of fiscal year 24, 25 audit slash consulting services. On page 192 of the agenda, you can see a full list of the requests by the various departments. So, non-general fund items, a few of the major items included are roof repairs on various city facilities, IT servers and switches, and costs for new restrooms at Arkalian Park. Page 193 of the agenda has a full list of the requests by the various departments. So, fiscal impact. If the mid-year budget recommendations are approved as presented, the increase to the general fund expenditures will be 281,705. Non-general fund expenditures will be increased by 650,473. Uncommitted reserves will be used to cover the additional expenditures in their respective funds. Moving Jilton's fee, franchise fee back to the general fund will increase the general fund revenue by 305,000. Recommendation, recommendation is for city council to approve the recommended adjustments to the budget as summarized in the mid-year budget review, and also city council to authorize the finance department to move Jilton's franchise fees from the fire services fund back to the general fund, and all future franchise fees received from Jilton to be put into the general fund. Any questions?
Council, any questions at this time? So, at this time, allow me, you can probably stay there for now, and, but I will go out for public comment. Is there any, anyone on the phone at this time? But I will go out for public comment. Is there any anyone on the phone at this time? At 8:25, coming back to the chamber at 8:25. Is there any citizen comments or questions in the chamber? Seeing none, closing the citizen comments at 8:25, bringing it back to the dials.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions and comments that I'd like to make. First of all, staff, thanks for putting this together. It was really nice to see outlined with the numbers for everything. It was presented as is presented in our staff report that only 1% of our one-year capital improvement plan expenditures have been expended up to this point. And even last year for fiscal year 2324, it's listed that only 6.5% of the planned expenditures for the CIP for that year were expended during the mid-year review. So that means we're we're under 10%, really close, under like 5% for this year, two years in a row, to me, which is indicative at least of some sort of trend. And so whether it's not having staff not having enough capacity to move forward, there is certainly something that exists as a roadblock for us to be able to move forward on this stuff. I think we can all agree that infrastructure is a huge deal right now, obviously on the water wastewater side, but improvements that we like to see in the community as a whole. And so I'd ask City Manager, any recommendations you have to that council can take on to help move some of these projects forward?
Thank you, Councilmember. A couple of questions came up to me over the last few weeks regarding, you know, infrastructure and expenditures. I think one of the things, and I'm happy to share this with the entire council, is looking at the expenditures for the various funds that we have. It appears that the city has a pretty aggressive list of projects that it would like to complete. And so I think it makes sense to look at opportunities that exist in other agencies. Sometimes you have individual groups, whether they're consultants or staff members, that are specifically tasked with carrying out the CIP. That's one option that the council could look at, and that's all aspects of the CIP. I will say something. Prior to my arrival here, the city didn't have a capital improvement program. And so one of the big things that I really emphasize is that you need to hold your city manager accountable. And you hold your city manager accountable by council-adopted programs and plans because you expect your city manager to carry out what the council has done. And so the first year, 2023, was about identifying what the capacity was for staff to carry out those projects. And so it was really placed on the staff consultants to really identify what those projects were going to be. So that was the first year. And you saw at the last mid-year, it was about 6% of expenditures, I believe. This year, the same thing, staff put together those projects. So I think, Councilmember, you've really identified that there's something that's going on there that the council may want to explore. You can mix around some options, including bringing on additional capacity to look at that. That may also mean looking at what we do with community development and bringing some in-house capacity to really tackle some of these items. And so you've got, you know, a consultant option to provide, a consultant to really be positioned and really told, carry out the one-year CIP. And then on the flip side, you could also look at, you know, bringing staff on board to carry those items through. I think this is really important for the council to identify because we all know that we've got challenges with the city's water infrastructure in particular. And so unless there's a change to some of those expenditures, and I know that those are of priority to the council, then unless you change up something, you know, you probably should expect the same type of outcomes. And so that really is the reason why that was included there because it's really a council policy decision as to what it really wants to do with carrying out these major projects. Earlier this year, the council also allocated about $9 million for additional projects to include well 18 and well 19. And so adding that to the list. Also, what wasn't included here was the MCAG Measure V projects, those regional projects. And so you can see there that there's an allocation of funding that's been programmed for the City of Livingston for this fiscal year, but there hasn't been any movement on that. The first step would be getting a funding agreement to the council. So you've got, the city has a lot of projects. It really comes down to what the council wants to do to move projects forward. And really, you know, I see members of the development community out in the audience, really putting an emphasis on moving forward these projects to really allow the development to occur in the community because right now is not a good position for staff to be in because we need water now, but obviously this takes time. So I hope that answered your question, Councilmember.
Yeah, I appreciate it. It's really helpful. And as you mentioned, with water infrastructure, obviously water wastewater infrastructure is a huge priority. We're very fortunate. We just got $27 million injected from the State Water Resources Board to move forward on some of those projects. But again, if we're not able to move on our city-specific capital improvement plans with current capacity, Measure V projects, well 18, 19, plus 27 million coming from the state, I just don't see how we're going to continue down this path and get everything that we want done if we lack capacity. And so I'll likely mention this tonight during potential future agenda items for discussion, I strongly urge the council to take these numbers to heart, like not lightly. You know, we all want to move the city forward. I know we all want infrastructure development, and we're not getting there right now, as much as we'd like. I know our community development team is only a team of two, and we have consultant engineers as well, who obviously are serving other cities. There's only so much capacity. You can't spend all of your time specifically on Livingston. And so I think we really need to take that and consider what the additional capacity we can bring to move forward because we cannot stay stagnant, especially with these funding increases that we're going to get, Measure V funds that need to be spent. It'd be really, really nice to get everything moving on the right track and have the additional capacity to do that. Thank you.
Counsel, anything else you might want to add? Actually, something that I might want to add, and as I was listening to Councilmember Opal, you know, we have a lot of work in front of us. And in conversation just probably about two months ago, and they, you know, somebody asked us like, well, how are you guys doing? I said, well, it depends on who you ask, you know, or how you guys, what are some of the things you guys want to do and accomplish? Then again, it depends on who you want to ask. Because I think that, you know, not only is there, I say, you know, there are two types of mayors, but there's also two types of councils. One, there's a lazy mayor that just is here for the title, and there's a mayor that is always working. Same for the council. You know, there's councils that are just, you know, attending their, I mean, not lazy in a way, you know, but just, you know, just just the minimum, bare minimum, really, I mean, to be honest with you. And there's councils that are really trying to get things done. And so, you know, to to his point, it's we do have a lot of things coming up, but we also, one of the other things that we also have coming up is the Measure L funds and how we're gonna, you know, what are the plans going to be for the for the Fire Department? So that is that is going to be a lot more work, and we only have 16, 18 months to be able to do something because that's how long our contract with CAL FIRE is, you know, and it's really not a lot of a lot of time. So, you know, we really have to be focused and centered and organized on what are some of the things that we need to get done to be able to accomplish that goal, actually those goals, because it's not just one. We have a lot of things that need to get done. And besides that comment, I actually have a question, but it doesn't show on this in this presentation, but if you can look at, well, maybe you don't have to look at it, but on page 190 of the report, there's a staff report, and it's kind of a description of different projects. And there's, you know, it has a project description and the amount budgeted and the actual expenses and what the status are for all those different projects on 190. And but, you know, replacing the stop signs and so on, but there's one, you know, Max Foster Phase One, Phase Two, and they're going to go out for to bid in May 2025 and so on. But there is the Walnut Walnut Child Day Daycare Roof Replacement. I do remember in the past, I think there was an item that was budgeted or it was somewhere budgeted in for like a cost of 100 and some thousand dollars to fix, but now we're looking to replace the whole entire roof, right? And maybe, I don't know if that's a question for Anthony or Recreation or, I don't know, Finance. Okay, Anthony. Okay. So I guess the question is, you know, kind of to 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 have a better understanding, you know, that what changed from the initial request of 100 and some thousand to now we're looking at 357,000 to which I'm thinking just to replace the whole entire roof?
Yeah, initial initial budget was 357 for a repair. We ended up digging in a little deeper and found that the the roof had never been replaced completely. It is 25 plus years old and is in need of a full replacement and not just a Band-Aid or a repair. Unfortunately, it's a large, large roof. And the full, that's why staff's asking for appropriation in the budget or mid-year budget.
And so so now it's not just going to be just, basically, it's just going to be replaced entirely.
Yes.
And that hopefully will last, you know, 25, 30 years or so.
Oh, yes, 30 plus years. And also another item on there is the museum roof that hadn't been looked at. We did have a company come out and do a complete inspection of that roof. So we're asking for additional funds to re-roof that completely. That is another roof that has not been fully repaired or restored. It's just been Band-Aided for many years and is in need of a full, complete roof repair.
Once again, I think that's a perfect example of what could have been done to prevent, you know, not be here now that we have to replace. And I mean, it probably had to be replaced sometime, but you know, if more work could have been done in the past. But anyways, so I just wanted to make sure that, so that will be the full amount, 357 that will be to replace for the full?
357 was originally budgeted, and we're asking for the full 450 for that CDC location.
So in the expenditures, there is additional 93,000 being asked for on top of the 357.
Okay, so now the, okay, got it. Perfect. Thank you for clarifying that. So now it's 400 and?
About 450 or so.
Yeah. Okay, 450. And then currently, the the Development Center, that's what they also call it, the daycare center, is being leased to the school district?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Maybe, and then again, this question is for Jackie now, probably. I don't know. I don't know. Somebody's, how often or how is that agreement for the city to have access to the center upon availability, depending on what the district has going on, or who has priority?
Can you repeat the question?
So, so not a, we're going to replace the roof, but it's currently being leased to the school district. And by being leased to the school district, they have priority as far as, I know that the city uses the facility sometimes, but it would be based on availability depending on their schedule, correct?
Correct. If I might give a little history lesson. So one of the things that our department is going to be working with the city attorney to revisit our joint use agreement. Currently, currently on that facility, the school district pays no rent, and they pay 40% of the utilities. So in best interest of the city, but and the community members so that we can have money for repairs and replacements. It would be time after 20 some years that we revisit that and maybe make the agreement to be more fair to all the parties. So.
Okay, now, another question comes up, and it's probably of this budget here, but or maybe that will be another question for later, to see what other facilities are being leased, or if there are any other facilities being that are owned by the city, that the city is responsible for, and that are being leased to other entities that we know of?
To my knowledge, that's the only one.
Okay.
We are leasing other facilities for city use, but we don't own them.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Looking forward to that in the near future. All right. Right now, those are the only questions I see so far. Thank you, Anthony. Counsel, any other questions, comments? Motion?
If there's no other questions or comments, I'll motion to approve item nine A.
So we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Opal. I'll go ahead and second that. Motion by Councilmember Opal, second by Mayor Moran. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Ubo?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four zero.
Next item would be item nine B, Mr. Mayor, and that would be consideration of a resolution authorizing the Finance Department to move Jilton franchise fees from the Fire Services Fund back to the General Fund and all future franchise fees received from the Jilton to be put into the General Fund. Staff recommendation, staff recommendation is approve the resolution.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions, comments at this time?
Can I jump in real quick?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I actually spent several hours the last couple of days going through the situation with the franchise fee and the admin fee, and I prepared some slides on both of them. We haven't discussed these issues in months. And so obviously, we have members of the community here tonight that were not there the last time they were discussed, and I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. Because when these items were discussed, as I was navigating through the meetings, there was lots of confusion, lots of questions about the specifics behind the fees. When I was a member of the audience, I was even confused that there were two separate fees. And so if it's okay with the council, I'd like to go ahead and kind of just walk us through where we're at, and then have some potential solutions and questions for you all on how we'd like to proceed, if that's okay.
Counsel, any objections?
Monica, do you have? Franchise, please. And I hope it looks better than it looked on my end. You have a clicker? Perfect. So again, this is a discussion on the franchise fee for Gilton Waste Collection Services. This is something I had trouble with for a long time when I was trying to figure out what's going on as a resident, of what a franchise fee is. Staff, attorney, please correct me at any point if you'd like. But essentially, what a franchise fee is, and in the concept of context of Gilton, it's a fee that the City of Livingston is charging to Gilton on all revenues they make within the city for waste collection services. And in return, the city allows Gilton to be the sole exclusive franchise that provides waste collection services to the city. City is currently charging Gilton a 15% franchise fee that was approved on March 19th, when we approved our contract with Gilton. And prior to the most recent contract, the City of Livingston had not included a franchise fee in contracts with Gilton. And I know that the city attorney and the city manager mentioned that they were surprised when they came to the City of Livingston, that we did not previously include this fee. However, a franchise fee was included in the RFP sent out by the city on December 2nd, 2022, when we decided to go look for potential contractors that would provide us waste collection services. So some more quick background on that. In the past, City Livingston has contracted with Gilton for waste collection services. And due to pending contract expiration in December of 2022, the city sent out an RFP for waste collection services, and a franchise fee was included in that. the city sent out an RFP for waste collection services and a franchise fee was included in that RFP. And I did want to include a quick shout out to Anthony, because I know you weren't on board when this RFP was sent out. But you, when you did come on board, you had to carry the legwork to, to bring this forward. So thank you for all the work that you put in to this. Moving forward, on July eighteen, twenty twenty three, the city contracted with HF and H, who's a consultant, to work with our staff to evaluate the proposals that we received in our RFP. We got proposals from Gilton, Mid Valley and Modesto Garbage Company. Evaluation concluded that Gilton was the best option. This was presented to council on December fifth, twenty twenty three. And Gilton was unanimously selected by the council on that night, and those are the council members who voted to select Gilton. And they did provide us the best offer. Now, there was discussion about whether or not the franchise fee was presented or whether or not council had the opportunity to see that the franchise fee was in the contract. And so I went back and I looked through all the reports. The first mention of the franchise fee that I found that council could have seen that it was in, the agreement was in the staff report provided on December fifth, twenty twenty three. This chart is verbatim from the staff report on page one twenty eight. And if you can see that no right there, these proposed rates from Gilton include franchise fees at fifteen percent. Also in that staff report, on the very next page, one twenty nine, we have a revised proposed rate schedule from Gilton. And again, on the bottom, it shows that proposed rates included franchise fees at fifteen percent. This is from the staff report on December fifth, twenty twenty three, where staff provided the evaluation conducted on all three haulers. On February twentieth, twenty twenty four, two months later, a potential contract after negotiations went down with staff was brought to council. It wasn't voted on that night because Gilton requested that it be pulled so that they could have some discussions with RWA. However, on February twentieth, on pages thirty seven, thirty eight and fifty one of the staff report, language around the franchise fee was included. And as you can see very clearly, section sixteen of the contract explicitly listed the franchise fee. Item was brought back on March nineteenth, where staff report included the same language as provided in that previous slide. Mayor Pro Tem had taken an issue that night with the franchise fee and the admin fee, and he wishes it would have been more clear and brought up. He indicated that he was not aware of the presence of the fees coming into the meeting, and that's why I wanted to include that from before. However, I do want to mention that it was never explicitly stated by staff until this March nineteenth meeting, recognition of the franchise fee. Due to a pending contract expiration and lack of compliance with CalRecycle, council approved the franchise agreement that night unanimously on March nineteen, twenty twenty four. Approval of the franchise fee would still need to be done via resolution, as the city attorney indicated on March nineteenth. And so that was brought back on April sixteen, twenty twenty four. The council did decide to approve the franchise fee via resolution. However, at the request of the mayor Pro Tem, the council decided unanimously to place that money into the fire fund to not have it be essentially a hidden tax on the residents and only be used as needed. And at the time, obviously, fire was a big priority. It still is. We have majoral now, but we didn't at the time. These are Gilton's previous rates. This was presented by Happy. I can't remember on exactly what day. They used to charge the city nineteen dollars. It was coupled with the admin fee and for a total charge of twenty nine dollars that residents saw. Plus the, it was about thirty. There's a plus the dollar six in there. And this is Gilton's charge from the agreement and the contract we negotiated that was approved on March nineteenth. They increased their charges by sixteen dollars, all the way up to thirty five, twenty five. City did not approve the admin fee and Gilton also decided to remove it from their rate. Before residents would not see that they were paying a, a Gilton rate and an admin fee, they would just see the Gilton rate you saw on the previous slide. And so Gilton raised their charges drastically. And I do want to point out the mayor Pro Tem, when this item was presented, asked the Gilton rep if the franchise fee was included in their rates. And they did confirm verbally that the fifteen percent franchise fee is included in this thirty five, twenty five charge to the residents. And they actually came back at the request of the council to ask how much exactly the franchise fee was. And as you can see in the table and I listed below, the franchise fee comes out to about five twenty seven per month per resident. I mean, not per resident, per parcel, so each bill. So as it currently stands, this franchise fee has been approved. It's in the agreement. It's being received every month from Gilton. However, it's being deposited in a fire fund. And as a result, as Happy just mentioned, there's a deficit in the general fund because the franchise fee was budgeted into the general fund, but not placed there. And obviously, the city needs to balance its budget. And so these are just some potential options that I wanted to throw out to council and hear staff's opinions on and hear council's opinions on. Obviously, these are, neither of these are staff's recommendation. That's already on the table, and I'm open to that as well. But if there's still frustration with the franchise fee, do we want to remove it entirely? And if so, what is the process for that? Is there a way to balance the budget without moving the franchise fee back into the general fund? And I'd like to hear staff's thoughts on that. And the city manager, I know you mentioned that balancing budgets is easy. However, the money's always coming from somewhere. So obviously, if we're gonna move money into the general fund, that's not the franchise fee. Something else is getting cut. And if we do decide to move the franchise fee into the general fund as it was budgeted, do we want to keep it there permanently? Or do we want to keep it there temporarily as we explore other options if we decide that we don't want to keep it there going forward? And so again, really just wanted to make sure we're all on the exact same page of where we're at. If anybody disagrees, you're more than welcome to say it now. And I'm curious to hear how council feels about these options, as well as staff's recommendation to keep it in the general fund permanently. Thank you.
Counsel, is there any questions, comments at this time regards to the presentation? Yeah, I mean, but just I, I need to ask because I don't want to get screamed at later. That I'm not asking counsel. I'm just joking. I'm just being sarcastic. Okay. So counsel, is there any questions, comments at this time?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
We have, the way I see things, franchise fee is not being paid by Gilton. Let's get this straight. Gilton is not paying that fee. The ratepayers are paying that fee. It's like they say, hey, we're gonna impose tariffs. That particular country is gonna pay it. No, that country's not paying it. It's the end user. To me, this is unfair to the ratepayers because they are subsidizing services that they're not paying, that they're not getting the benefit from that, from the Gilton fee. They're paying five hundred thousand dollars for what they're getting no service for. Here, we're told repeatedly, water fund is restricted, wastewater is restricted, Gilton's is restricted, gas tax are, all these funds are restricted, but so is this. To unfairly charge people franchise fee when they don't have no input on it, it is just plain wrong. Yes, I saw those things, but also understand, Judge Jean, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate that. But all those footnotes and everything, we were going back and forth with contracts, even though it was there. The night we, we did approve it, we were told if we don't approve it tonight, we're gonna be in some sort of violations with everybody. I strongly said, let's not do this. And then we had another urgent thing come up and say, well, what happens with our fire services? Well, now same staff saying, well, we got majoral, so let's put that money into the general fund. My question would have been, had the majoral failed, that money would have stayed. How would you have offset the, the shortfalls in the general fund? You know, we need to pretend like majoral didn't pass. To me, that fifteen percent, that five hundred thousand dollars or whatever it's gonna be, is owed back to the, the ratepayers. We should not steal from the ratepayers and put it onto other stuff that they have no voice in with their rates. I strongly recommend that we put that money back into the solid waste, use that to offset any administrative charges we have. Because it is downright wrong. We, city made it through all these years without charging franchise fee. And in the past, we should have done rate studies and everything prior to doing this, but we didn't. And, and again, I cannot stress enough, when they say that Gilton's paying the fee, they're not. Let's not kid ourselves. Anybody says that the ratepayer, Gilton's paying the fee, they're not. So to me, I strongly, strongly recommend that we put that money into the solid waste and, and use it to offset the solid waste, and then make whatever adjustments we need to the general fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So I actually do agree with the mayor Pro Tem. Technically, Gilton is paying this money, but it's effectively being subsidized by the folks that are actually paying the garbage bill. Gilton's not just gonna pay an extra fifteen percent just because out of their good grace. However, I do want to point out, whether or not we like that this is here or that our ratepayers are paying for it, this is here. As it stands today, this franchise fee exists. And there's a deficit in the general fund because it's not where it was budgeted to be. And so I guess the only thing I would ask the mayor Pro Tem, if you'd like to answer, and staff as well, is if council decides not to put this in the general fund, what proposals do you have to balance the general fund as needed? I do apologize to staff because you were probably not prepared for the question this night and probably have to look at it forward. But any thoughts that you have or how much time we'd actually need to assess and, and do something about that?
So when we talk about a balanced budget, that just means for that fiscal year. So we still do have reserves there that can kind of come in and play on this. But for this instance, so in this case, we would reduce our expenditures. So whether it be a project, whether it be a funding from somewhere else to get a balanced budget, as Christopher mentioned to you, it's, it's a numbers game. So we just reduce one and then increase the other or one or the other to make it balanced.
So I'll, I'll provide a little bit more information as well. And I mentioned this in one of the emails. You know, it's really easy to balance a budget. You either increase your revenues or decrease your expenditures. In the city of Livingston, though, one of our biggest expenses is personnel. And one of the biggest departments is the police department. And politically speaking, you know, councils aren't really receptive to decreasing expenditures in the police department, which rightfully so. I would not recommend at all that any reductions be made in the police department. As a matter of fact, I think that your expenditures should actually increase in the police department. And I think Chief Schiff would agree with that as well. Given the incident that occurred yesterday in the police station, you clearly have a situation that if you don't have officers that are well-trained, well-prepared, that you create some significant liabilities for the city. So paying salaries, and this is for any operation in the city, people have options. And so by paying wages that maybe don't compete with what officers can get in another agency, sometimes those motivated by money will go to another agency. So that's why it's really important to put this kind of in a bigger context. In addition to that, I will probably say that your expenditures are probably going to rise this fiscal year. You've got CalPERS increases that are almost always happening. You've got increases in maintenance and operations. You've got contracts that have built-in inflators. So really, the best bet for an agency is for its revenues, its growth in revenues, whether that's property tax or sales tax, is to keep up with your growth in expenditures. And the issues come up when your expenditures or your revenues don't keep up with your expenditures. So think about a recession happening. You see a decline in revenues, but your expenditures haven't necessarily decreased. And so that's where an emergency reserve is really important. So with that being said, you know, we're looking at one moment in time. Your expenditures will increase next year. Happy, what's the likelihood that the expenditures with a status quo budget will stay the same, decrease or increase next fiscal year?
They'll be increasing.
So what you have is although the budget deficit may be, let's say, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars this year, with that, with the lack of the franchise fee, you can probably expect at minimum that that deficit probably grows to three hundred and twenty thousand. And then the next year it grows to maybe six hundred thousand. So it just continues to compound. If you don't address either the increase in revenues that you need to keep up with your expenditures, or you deal with the expenditure side, which is cutting and making reductions on the expenditure side. The reserves are available for making infusions into the general fund to make up for that difference. However, the problem then becomes you're using your savings account to pay for your mortgage, to pay for your car payment. And what happens once your savings account gets depleted? Now you're back to, you gotta make those hard decisions on the expenditure side. On the revenue side, there's some things that haven't been done in the city of Livingston that the council may want to think about. Fees for service, we know that those areas aren't always areas that council wants to talk about, but the fees that are charged too. And I'm looking at some of the development community out here. You know, the city is subsidizing the cost for providing engineering services and community development services to the development community. Again, not a popular thing to want to talk about, but we're being real with the situation here. I think those are the, the big things. I think the overarching theme in my history and my career has been working in cities that have had this exact same problem with the revenues not meeting expenditures. And unfortunately, in those communities, one of them went bankrupt. The other one was on the verge of bankruptcy, but it was only made possible by really getting the rein on your expenditures and your, your revenues. And so fee for service studies, that covers almost all programming. Another politically unpopular item is things like recreation. Charging the cost for providing the service, it's not a popular thing. But obviously, there's a subsidy that's provided by the general fund to cover the costs in recreation. Those are unpopular items. I'm not by any means recommending those items, but I'm just saying those are other ways to deal with revenue issues. And the big thing that I'll, that I'll add is a really great way to increase revenues in, in a community is economic development. However, we find ourselves in the position where we cannot grow because of the water issues that we have. So we see that the lack of investment or the movement on the infrastructure side really prohibits our ability to grow ourselves out of this revenue issue. It'd be great to bring in, you know, car dealerships. It'd be great to bring in really those types of businesses that provide additional revenue to the community. However, we don't have the infrastructure in place to do that. And that's, that's where these, these items create these critical problems for us that we're looking at, you know, some years out before we can talk about, you know, the growth that we can really use on the economic development side because we don't have the ability to grow ourselves as fast as we want it to be. Does that provide some context?
That's super helpful, Yana. Whether or not they're popular, I do appreciate that you shared some options. But again, they're not popular. And whether or not we like that this fee is in place and that it got passed over to our residents, like that's already been done. Like none, none of our staff prepared, at least to my knowledge, city manager and public works director who carried a lot of the legwork for moving this agreement through did not create the RFP where the franchise fee was included. And it was not called out with enough time to get it out for negotiation. It's in there today, and it was budgeted for a specific purpose. And so what I would say to the council is I'm not a fan of, of this being in place either. I don't like the extra charge that we're charging our residents. They are subsidizing this, and I'd like to remove that for them if possible. But we also have to be fiscally responsible. And not, I, I don't like the idea of just throwing it to staff and be like, hey, figure it out, balance it, cut something, do what you gotta do, raise rec costs and have the whole community punish Jackie, even when it's not her fault, when rec costs go up or whatever we have to do. And so at least for this fiscal year, what I would propose is if council does not feel comfortable moving in this direction permanently, is to move the money back into the general fund for this fiscal year. Ask staff if they can consider other options, if this franchise fee does not stay in the general fund moving forward. And then based on whatever proposal comes back, trust that recommendation to say, do we need to keep this here or can we maneuver without it? In all honesty, we're gonna get into the discussion later. If it's possible going forward in the future, I would like if this franchise fee could subsidize some of the administrative fee that is being paid for Gilton services. However, again, at this point in time, I, I don't think we can just kick this to the side and, and say, figure it out. I think we need to balance the budget for, at the bare minimum this year and have some time to, to really evaluate and bring back proposals to go without it. And maybe it comes back and it says it's, it's responsible to just keep it there permanently. And if that's the case, I think we should move in that direction.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I understand what council member Opal is saying, but our residents, when we asked for their help with fire department and all that, they stepped up to 2.3 million. We can step up for them and say, we know it's difficult for you. Inflation is high. Everything is expensive. Some folks are having a very, very difficult time making their bill. Right after, if we do this, what you're saying is next item is gonna be to include the admin fees. We've already included the admin fees. The rates to the people now are gone up. And then we're gonna move that money back in and then what? People are already paying the higher rate. They're already subsidizing it. It doesn't make sense to hit them with a double whammy. If they had, if people did not step up, that money would have stayed in the fire fund and the staff would have to make the difficult decision. I'd say move it back to the solid waste and still make those decisions or calculations that they would have done had the managerial failed. So please, I fought this as long as I can remember, do not do this to the people. It is very difficult for some people. Maybe we're seeing through our lens of what we can afford, but there are people that have to make a decision on which bill to pay which month and which one to skip on, how to get cash. You know, it is difficult. So please, don't do this. Please put it back in there. There are adjustments we can make to the budgets. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that. I can't agree more that a lot of our residents are struggling to pay bills, but I do think the comment is somewhat disingenuous because no matter what happens with the admin fee later in this conversation, this is already being charged to the residents. No matter how we decide to budget this money, they're already paying for it. They are already paying for this. We are not increasing rates with the franchise fee. I'd like to make that very clear. And so what's led to so many issues for our residents is fiscal irresponsibility or just council irresponsibility in the past. Again, nobody even knew that this was included just because of city manager turnover, staff turnover. And now we're in a position where whether or not we like it, this is the way it is. No matter how we budget this, again, we are not raising costs on the residents with the franchise fee. It has already been approved, which the rest of this council, with the exception of me, voted to approve back in March. And so it's not about you shouldn't have done it then. Everybody was in a precarious spot. You can't change irresponsible decisions that were made before you got here. But now that we're in this situation today, we have to be responsible moving forward. We can't come back down the line and be in another bind again, which is why I asked, at least for this fiscal year, the money has already been charged. It's already being paid. Let's move it back into the general fund and ask staff to see if they can create a proposal going forward for future budgets, if we can manage our general fund expenditures without this being in place. The money's already there. I feel like we should be responsible with what we do with it.
Okay, and then if that money is not gonna be directed to, and I'm just talking, okay, into the solid waste, staff are gonna say, we don't have that money coming in. Therefore, we have to charge our administrative fees to make up for the losses. If we have the money, we can say, well, the money is there. So we can say, take some of that franchise fee and use it to offset some of the administrative fees. So you would get the general reduction overall for the administrative fees. If we move that money into the other one, we're not gonna have that cushion. Therefore, the administrative fee is gonna be at a higher rate, which will, soon as we pass administrative fee, it will increase the total bill to the residents for that. The minute we approve it, their bill has gone up. So it may not go up as much if we have that money going in there. So do consider that as well.
I agree with you exactly what I proposed earlier, that we move this into the fiscal year for now. And then moving forward, we prepare a budget where this franchise fee is offsetting some of that administrative fee and then explore options to recoup this expenditure. Again, I wish it wasn't here. Like in all honesty, I don't, I don't want to charge an extra $5 to our residents, which is effectively being done. However, this exists the way it is. We have a budget to balance for this year. I think it's a responsible thing to do to balance it as is, not throw it on staff to just figure it out at the last hour. And moving forward, if we want to put this into administrative expenses, which I'm actually okay with, because the bill that they're paying is offsetting their own costs with that bill, then let's try to plan for a budget where it's covering the administrative expenses going forward and another path to offset this deficit. But at least for this fiscal year, '24, '25, I ask that the council move this back into the general fund and explore options beyond that moving forward.
Thank you. So before I go out for public comment, you know, there's one thing that I do want to clarify. So I think there's a miss or a confusion or there's language that seems to be causing some confusion toward saying that this fee was not included in the past. It was included, but it just wasn't shown as an administrative fee or as a franchise fee. The only difference was that before this, it wasn't disclosed. It was already included and integrated in the fee that was being charged. So now the only thing, the only difference that is happening is that it's been separated so for transparency purposes, so that people know what they're paying. You're paying for the service and then you're paying for the franchise fee. Prior to this contract, it was included and then all, the only thing that people saw was this is your garbage fee. But there was no fine print or any disclosure that that fee that I and you and everybody else in the city were paying included that 15% franchise fee. So there's no difference. I mean, I don't, you know, it's not like we're charging more. It's not like, it's not like there's an additional fee that's being charged to the customer. The only reason it has gone up because the cost of work and living has gone up. You know, I mean, we got the lowest bid from all the three different providers. And, you know, it's, there's nothing, there's not much we could do about how much each one of those providers, how much they're paying in their own fees to their own employees, their own cost of being in business. So it's, and so it's not that we're adding, I don't, unless I am mistaken, but, you know, we're not charging any more than we were before or that the city was before. The only difference is that the fee has gone up. The cost of doing business has gone up and that's the excess. I mean, you know, I mean, everything goes up and it's not like, well, you know, I mean, you have a choice. You have a choice of not having a garbage service provider or not having anybody pick up your garbage, just like we have a choice of not going out to eat, not driving around, you know, and using more gas. But, you know, we still go and buy gas regardless of what the cost is. You know, so it's really, you know, if we could, if we could decide what the cost of gas was gonna be, we probably would not be paying $3.99 or $4.18 a gallon. You know, so same thing here, you know, and actually, you know, probably looking at how much we are paying in the city of Livingston is much less than what some of the other agencies around in Mercer County are paying. Some are paying up in the numbers like $100, close to $189, $95, close to $100, you know? And so it's, I guess, but to say that it is costing because we are charging more because we want to charge more, it's not that we want to charge more because it all goes back to the, you know, it's like, yes, people were paying, but it all goes back to the community. You know, it all goes back into recreation, goes back into public works, parks and stuff like that, streets. I mean, I have parks. I pay LMDs. I pay for having a park in front of my house. I don't even use it, but I'm still paying, right? Many of us have some services that we don't pay, that we're paying for, but we don't even, I don't, you know, but will sacrifice a few dollars for the benefit of the community. You know, so, and I remember years ago, I think it was four or five years ago, when council was deciding, and I think recreational was having a hard time trying to figure out how much to charge for each child to participate in some of those activities that the city was providing. You know, and it's like, and then council had to make a decision, it's like, do we cut the recreation fund, funding by, you know, $100,000? Then that meant either parents had to pay more and council, and I remember at that time, it was a very tough situation because, you know, they were talking about, okay, well, let's just get rid of recreation. We're gonna save $500,000. With $500,000, we can have two more police officers, two or three more police officers. Okay? Well, it doesn't make any sense. You know, I'd rather invest it, not, I don't see it as an expense. I see it as an investment. I'd rather invest it in recreation to prevent those kids from being out on the street to where we need to have more additional police officers, just because, you know, they need to be out there and managing all those kids that are not doing anything. So just for clarification, it's not an additional fee that we're, that council added. It was already being there. It was already there. Okay? So, and I think that's what's being misled or miscommunicated, or at least, you know, that's not the way it's being interpreted or out in a community. So it's not an additional fee that was added. It was already in there. It was just separated. But if there's an additional payment, so we'll go out for public, yes, go ahead.
One more. Mr. Mayor, you're somewhat correct. Yes, administrative fees were always in there. Now, it could still be there, but if we didn't charge the franchise fee, the rates, the contract amount that Gilton charged the city would have been 15% lower. So, yeah, it might have been included, but it's the additional contract price is because of the franchise fee. Now, Councilmember Opal, I would like to meet you somewhere in the middle and say, the money that we have in that fund now, move that to general fund and move the rest of it to the solid waste. Are you willing to entertain it that way?
Are you saying move a portion of it into the general fund?
Whatever is in the account now, move it to the general fund and put the rest of it back into the solid waste. That meets our goal, I think, you know? Staff can still make some decisions, but maybe it won't be a little bit easier to make the decisions. Are you willing to entertain that?
I am, yes. I would like to actually ask. Happy if it's okay. So the general fund currently has a deficit of $160,000? And this is more than $160,000, correct? The total amount for the franchise fee?
Correct. So currently, we've only got two payments from Gilton, and I don't know the exact number that we got. We've only got two payments from Gilton so far for this franchise fee.
Are we able to move the portion that covers the deficit and then keep the rest in a solid waste fund? Is that feasible?
So currently, it's not in the solid waste right now. Currently, it's in a new fire fund that we made. So yes, per judgment council, we can move any amount that you have on, move to general fund, and the remainder can go to solid waste or leave into fire fund, whatever you desire to do.
I can get by that, move, cover the deficit and then move the rest into solid waste?
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I would say we would need a motion on that.
Well, I, thank you. And then also, you know, just, I think it's very important to not forget that this is just basically, you know, like it has been stated. We would just be moving money around, we would be taking from one and giving to the other. So in the future or as we move forward, what would the residents in the city of Livingston be willing to give up? You know, because that's what's gonna happen and it's been said and it's clear. It's just a budgeting strategy. We're just moving money around and just to make sure that we have whatever goal we have in mind. So, and it's all about services, but we just need to be careful. Okay? And, you know, I definitely wouldn't want to compromise. I mean, something has to be compromised, but just moving forward, you know, I think it's important to not forget that. So at this time, I will go out for public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone, 9:20, in regards to this item? Here and now, coming back to the chamber, is there any citizen comments in regards to this item? Please come forward and state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Pramind RuPaul. I just had a few questions. I was trying to do my best to try to get some information about this topic for the meeting today, and I thought I had it clear. I'm a little confused again. So I just wanted to clarify alongside the council. We're talking about the franchise fee and the admin fee. Those are two different fees, right? Just to be 100% clear, the franchise fee is the 15% fee that we're charging Gilton that they're, we're assuming gonna pass on to the consumers. And then you have the admin fee, which is the cost for administration services that happen on staff. The franchise fee is new, right? We have had previous contracts with Gilton without a franchise fee. So that is a new cost that's being added on to consumers. The admin fee is the fee that's been separated from the original Gilton price that used to come as one price with the admin fee included, and now you have the Gilton price and the admin price separated costs. But so we are having an additional fee, the franchise fee that's being charged in our contract with Gilton. So that is a new fee, just to be clear, because some on the council have said there are no new fees. There's some that said there are new fees that are being passed on to consumers. So I just wanted to clarify, there are new fees that are being passed on to consumers with the, with the new contract. My second question was, in regards to moving some of the money, we're talking about the general fund being out of balance because the original funds that we were expecting to receive from the franchise fee were budgeted into the general fund and then they were moved, so now the general fund is out of balance? So in regards to moving money back into the general, council members, Paul and Summer just talked about moving some money into the general fund to cover the deficit and leaving the remainder into a solid waste fund or something along those lines. Isn't the $150,000 or whatever that number is that we're in deficit supposed to be the total accounted for revenue coming in from the 15% franchise fee? So I was a little unclear when you guys were discussing now, how there would be some sort of leftover remainders after moving some and then leaving some. I thought that was the entirety of the 15% franchise.
So when the contract happened, so we estimated around 305,000 coming in franchise fees due to when the contract was executed. So it's not a full year.
Can you say that again?
So the contract, it wasn't executed, our fiscal year is from July to June. So when we do the budget, we do it from July to June. So when the contract was executed, we estimated 305,000 coming in franchise fees for that fiscal year. Total is going to be around 600 for the whole fiscal year. So now what council is approving is what we currently have in this fiscal year, we're gonna move that back into the general fund to make up for the deficit. So when we did the budget, we estimated only the portion of when the contract was being executed to June.
Right.
So that's what we're gonna move right now, is move the money back into the general fund to make up for the initial movement. And then anything after the second half of the year, we're gonna move into the solid waste fund.
All right, okay, cool. Thank you so much.
So Mayor, if I could add one thing, and I think this gets at the question that the gentleman asked, the city council adopted a budget with $150,000 surplus to begin fiscal year '24, '25. So the 150 is the difference between what the original budget amount was for the franchise fee, which is $300,000. And so with the surplus, you now have $150,000 that is now being utilized from that surplus. And then that difference is the difference between that, right? Yeah, so that's why it's not the entire $300,000 deficit, because there was $150,000 surplus at the beginning of the adoption of the budget.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment in the chamber? Please come forward.
I have a question. So before this contract, did Gilton pay the city, let's not call it a franchise fee, but did Gilton pay the city a fee or a percentage for being the sole provider? Or is that strictly new because of this new contract?
No, they didn't.
Okay. As a, I'll give you some feedback as a business owner. We do deal with Gilton, we deal with all the other vendors, and when we're able to order large containers for our development from Gilton, we always do, because they're usually, and I don't want to name names, but they're anywhere from 15 to 30% less expensive than the other vendors. So sometimes businesses like Gilton will give, let's say, a customer a discount on their services because they're gonna provide a contract for a long period of time. And that allows them to keep their staff, equipment, operations going because they have guaranteed. going because they have, um, guaranteed revenues for a certain amount of time. So the way I would look at it is, I mean, yes, it, it, you're giving the, the city fifteen percent, but compared to everything else in the market, it's still the, the least expensive. I mean, even for me as a business owner, it's the least expensive option. That's one. And I think it's, it is prudent to, to balance your budgets and, uh, but I've always invited the council to be open, uh, to the idea for development. With development, we're able to increase tax rules ten percent. So yes, you want a budget, and yes, you want to, uh, make sure you balance, but why not, um, also increase the development to bring more revenue? So that way you, you have more, um, uh, tax dollars, you have more, uh, you have a bigger checkbook to continue some of the, like, uh, these, uh, things like we want, like with, uh, Jackie, you know, and, uh, police department and, and housing. I mean, with, I mean, we're, I mean, I, every time I'm, I'm up here and I can, I give you guys my feedback, I mean, you guys, I mean, not you guys, but I'm saying the city of Livingston whole and, and the state, we're getting, we're in a deficit of housing. So the longer we wait, it just gets more expensive, more expensive, more expensive, more expensive. And ultimately, the consumer is a pain. And it's just a simple supply and demand. We have very, uh, small supply of housing units, um, and that is going to keep putting pressure on, uh, both rental prices and, uh, prices of homes. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there any additional citizen comments in the chamber? Seeing none, I will close the citizen comments on nine twenty seven, uh, bringing it back to a dais. Counsel, is there any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Before we, uh, motion on this item, I would like to ask Happy and/or City Manager, if you'd like to give feedback, a question and be as honest as possible. Do you think it's a reasonable move that we're making to cover the deficit and not plan for this, uh, to be in the general fund in the future, but rather cover solid waste expenses? On your end, as somebody that's planning the budget, and if, from a city manager perspective, you'd like to have that as well?
So yes, as we mentioned, the budget was made with this being part of it. So to move it back, yes, that makes sense. To put this money back into the solid waste, it still would not reduce the fees to the consumers, because that's part of the Gilton's contract. Yes, if we go out to a rate study, it would kind of, what does a rate study would increase that revenue of that solid fund, of the solid waste? So it would help out.
And then specifically to the point to planning future budgets, do you think it's reasonable for us to not include this in the general fund moving forward, but rather try to use it to offset the costs of potentially the administrative expenses we're going to get into later?
Yes, because the good, because the services that are being provided, this consumers that are paying is for the water sewer, I mean, the sanitation for, for the refuse part of it. So it does, should go back into that solid fund.
So I'll add a couple things. One of the things that is really important is, um, you know, the admin fee. Let's just say for a minute, let's just explore the idea that the administrative fee or the expenses on the solid waste side for staff, that we don't want to have those expenses anymore. So there's expenses related to, uh, staff time, public works director, uh, maintenance workers that essentially clean up the, let's say, uh, messes that are left for community cleanup days, or, uh, you know, messes that occur after Gilton comes through and takes care of that. One option that the council could consider is, okay, we want to get out of the business of even providing utility billing by staff. You minimize your expenditures. You can certainly ask Gilton to provide that. I don't think that any vendor would necessarily do any of that work for free, so certainly you can shift that cost to the vendor to provide that. I think you mentioned out of the goodness out of their heart, someone mentioned out of the goodness of their heart, I don't think that they would do that for free. So you've shifted the expense from the city now to a vendor. That vendor will probably have a cost for that, that will probably be shifted to, uh, residents, one way or the other. Um, that is certainly something that the council can direct for negotiations with Gilton. It's something that if the council was open to that, they could certainly do that. Uh, when it comes to one of the big costs associated with, uh, the admin fee, that's utility billing provided by staff. So if the staff doesn't, and, you know, I'm going to get kind of, um, not a comfortable conversation to have, but if you don't want staff to take on that responsibility, you remove those positions from the city. You eliminate that work. You eliminate those positions. You reduce that cost, so those individuals are no longer employed by the city of Livingston. Gilton provides that service. They could do that essentially with their own staffing, they do that with their own people that they have there. I will say that that is a meet and confer, that is a, um, requirement needed if you're removing personnel from doing city provided work. That does require meet and confer negotiations for that, so it's not as easy as we might want it to be. The other thing that I will, uh, bring up to the council is, you know, the city, the council approved the last two one-year MOUs with its bargaining groups. Those bargaining, or those MOUs are set to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. I can probably with a hundred percent likelihood say that those bargaining groups will come to the council and request increases to salaries and wages and benefits. That will result, result in an increase in cost. So when we talk about what those costs are, where, and the answer doesn't need to come today, but where would those increase in expenses come from? That's a really legitimate thing to think about for the council when we talk about the incident that occurred last night with police officers and, um, police department expenses being one of the largest expenses in the city. That is something that you should definitely expect that happens as a request from the bargaining groups, because we know that we need to retain our highly skilled officers, and we need to make sure that we attract highly trained officers too. So in the absence of that revenue stream, where is that going to come from? And to, you know, dovetail on what Diego mentioned, I'm a firm believer in economic development. However, with the lack of water available for these projects, that really creates significant challenges in using economic development to drive that increase in revenue. So again, you know, I'm beating a dead horse here, but this is something that, you know, ten years ago, you planned for this type of stuff, increase in water capacity, increase in water, to make sure that you're not in this situation right now that we find ourselves in now. So I hope that provides a little bit of context, council member.
Yeah, that's super helpful. Thank you.
And, well, before I forget, you know, and I think a good point has been brought up, you know, and it's, and it's the question of, uh, why, you know, why now raise, raise the, the rates or the cost to the, to the, to the resident, you know, by five, ten, or thirteen, or fifteen dollars? Well, also, one of the other things that was mentioned, and, and I think we can all agree on that, if, you know, to me, it's common sense, if rates were not, were taking so long to go up and, you know, we were not planning for those rates to go up, uh, annually, uh, at a, at a rate that would justify to not have to raise the rates now five or ten, fifteen dollars a month, you know? Uh, and it causes, it makes it more difficult, you know? Maybe if, if five years ago, we said, you know, we're not going to raise no rates, and, you know, blah, 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 and this and that, and I'm God, and, you know? Uh, but guess what's going to happen five, ten years down the road? Now you have to raise the rates because the costs are going up, and you, if you don't have enough funding to, to pay the cost of employees, then now we're in trouble, you know? And, and I think honestly, that has been part of the problem in the city of Livingston. The, the can has been kicked down the road over, over, and over. And now we are here as a council trying to figure out what to do, you know? Uh, so, um, it's time to stop kicking the can down the road, basically. Roy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, to kind of clarify two points, because a couple times the word rate study has been used. Just for clarity of the record, the city, once it went to a form of, um, having a franchise, meaning not providing the service itself, um, the city cannot set Gilton's rate via a rate study. The city can perform a rate study, but what's going to, the component of the rate study is going to be Gilton providing you with what they're going to tell you they're going to charge you. We can't lower the rate because of a rate study, the rates are set by contract. Um, the contract would have to be renegotiated and amended to change the rates. Basically, the minimum rate, it, it was set when their contract was approved. Um, you know, and then I believe it has a CPI in there and, and means of adjusting their rate. But that's the only way that rate can be altered is through negotiations directly with Gilton. It cannot be altered by a rate study. Um, I'm not saying that I don't recommend doing a rate study, and as council will recall, I did, I did come forward and ask for, um, permission or authority to do the, the Prop two eighteen notice, um, which is probably something that we'll be bringing back to council soon, uh, for reconsideration.
Counsel, any other, uh, comments?
If there's no other questions or comments, I'd like to motion to move enough of the franchise fee to balance the general fund and allocate the rest of the funding to a solid waste fund.
I will second that.
I have one additional question, if you don't mind, real quick. So, so let's say that we go ahead and do that and move that a hundred and sixty thousand dollars back to the, uh, general fund. That's right now, but then what's going to happen from now on until the end of this budget? Then, then we're, eventually, we're going to start having to absorb money from that fund to be able to cover, again, any potential deficits from now until the end of June?
So for this fiscal year, once we move the money back, it will be a, it will be balanced. Coming, coming next fiscal year, there might be some cut downs because this money is going fully into the solid waste.
Okay, so, so we should be good until?
Yes.
The end of June?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you. So if there are no more other questions, uh, or comments, I do have a motion on the floor. Uh, so there's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Opol, a second by Mayor Potem. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Opol?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Semer?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passive by a vote of four zero.
All right, thank you. Uh, next we have item number ten, Notice of Resignation of Japjit Singh Opol from the Livingston Planning Commission. Resolution appointing Mohentor Kanda as a Commissioner of the City of Livingston Planning Commission and direction to staff to solicit applications for consideration for an appointment to the Planning Commission as a, as a Planning Commissioner alternate member. I'm not sure who's gonna present this item or add additional information to it.
You basically have said that there's a vacancy on the Planning Commission. Staff is recommending that one of the Planning Commission alternate members be appointed to the regular membership of the Planning Commission, and staff is directing, asking that the council direct staff to, um, go ahead and solicit for applications for members of the public that would be interested in serving on the Planning Commission as a Planning Commission alternate. I'm at all for questions. It's pretty basic.
Yeah, so then you would have, so, so you would just have one vacancy?
Correct.
After the, after, if this goes, it gets appointed?
Yes, we have a vacancy as a regular member to move up an alternate, and then in a domino effect, that creates a vacancy as an alternate member, and then he can fill that position once you solicit applications from residents.
Got it. Counsel, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, I don't know, maybe I'm getting old, but I, I thought we gave direction for thirty days for everybody in the city to apply for Planning Commission. Didn't we do that? Or am I wrong in that?
I believe last time it was just to bring it back now so that we could bring both recreation and planning.
Oh, God, okay, yeah. See, I am getting old, okay? So, uh, uh, one thing, uh, McGill, I don't know if you know, but I believe Mr. Kanda has already sold his business, and I think, I'm not even sure if he's in the city anymore. You know, he sold his business, right?
Uh, I'm aware that he, uh...
Yeah, he's not even here now.
I didn't know he...
I don't know if he moved out of the city, but I know that he's not in the city right now.
Yeah, I haven't investigated whether he has moved or not.
You may want to consider that because I think he was planning to sell his business and move out.
Yes, uh, we'll, we'll look into that. Again, whether he owns the business is different, whether he's a resident in the, in the town.
Yeah, so, you know, but, uh, to me, I think we should still, uh, allow a thirty-day application file for everybody to come in, and that also, you know, he can apply too, because I think in the past, we didn't automatically move alternate to the point, you know, that I don't know what the proper word is, but we've, we've gone back and forth. So I would strongly recommend that we allow a thirty-day filing time for everybody, and if Mr. Kanda's still here, of course, you know, he, he can be considered.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Was not aware, uh, that Mr. Kanda is potentially selling his business and, and leaving, uh, but with all due respect to Mr. Kanda, whether or not he was leaving the city of Livingston, I would not feel comfortable, uh, appointing him as a permanent member of the Planning Commission tonight. I, I said this the night I was appointed, when we considered bringing on another council member. I don't appreciate when folks don't show up and expect to be given a position. And like, realizing this now, there's so much that goes into these decisions, so much where I'm looking back and saying, dang, I did not put in enough work. And to have somebody that doesn't show up at all, asking to be given a position, I don't want to get by that. I'd feel much more comfortable appointing somebody like Mr. Castillo, who's actually here, engaged, um, keeping up with the council, or potentially another member of the community that might apply, uh, within the thirty-day window that you're talking about, and, or giving them a chance to be a permanent member. And anybody in the community is watching this now, that I, I have a very strong stance against that. I do not, very rarely will you find me supporting and give me somebody a position that does not show up and expects to be given one. Mr. Kanda, God forbid, anything serious is happening to him tonight, his name is on the agenda, he's not here. His name was on the agenda in the past, uh, when we all got appointed on the Planning Commission as permanent alternate members, and he wasn't there that night either. Again, nothing against the guy personally, but I don't feel comfortable appointing somebody that doesn't show up.
So, Councilmember Opol, was that potentially a motion?
There, if there's no other questions or comments, um, I'd motion to only solicit applications for consideration of another permanent commissioner and alternate commissioner.
I will second that.
So, so this would be at this time only for the commissioner vacancy, correct?
For the permanent vacancy and the alternate vacancy.
Well, we don't have an alternate vacancy officially yet. We only have your vacancy that you as a commissioner. We don't have an alternate.
There's only one vacancy, which is at the regular member position or level.
So, Councilmember Opol, you also mentioned the consideration to appoint, uh, to consider appointing Mr. Diego Castillo, who's here every single time, so that, that could also be a motion, if, if you...
If you guys are, um, if you guys are comfortable appointing Mr. Castillo tonight, I can get by that.
I will second that if, if, depending on what Mayor Potem, because he, uh...
Are you, I, I still think we should go ahead and open up for thirty days and let everybody apply. That way, everybody has a chance to come out. I like Mr. Castillo, you know that, you know? So nothing there, you know? He's, he's going to be at the next meeting anyway, you know, so it's not, he's, he's always here, so, you know? In, in a nice way, okay?
Uh, so if that was to happen, then we would have another, another vacancy, which is, we just, otherwise, we would just fill one vacancy now, and then in thirty days, we would fill the alternate vacancy, and then we're done. Otherwise, we have to come back two more times.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I agree. Diego is here at every meeting, I think we should appoint him, and then for the other vacancy, um, the alternate will have thirty days.
So Councilmember Opol would have to amend your...
I can remember my motion, I just want to confirm with the attorney, I know Mr. Castillo's name isn't on the agenda, is that even going to fly?
Unfortunately, no, because of the way it's agendized, uh, it's specifically saying to appoint, uh, Mr. Kanda. And so, uh, because of that, the, the council can direct staff, give alternative direction to, um, to prepare and seek applications, or direct staff to bring this back at the next council meeting to appoint, um, uh, Diego, I'm sorry, this is getting late, um, Diego to the Planning Commission.
Can we do both? There, there seems to be a majority of council members that are willing to appoint Diego. Can we plan ahead for that and start an application process while bringing an agenda item back?
Well, you could bring it... Well, you could bring it, you don't have to do the agenda, the process, you could just direct staff to bring back a resolution at the next council meeting, appointing Diego to the Planning Commission seat.
Right, but that'll create another vacancy, so can we begin that application process now as well?
Correct.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you could do them both.
Okay, in, in that case, I'd like to motion to direct staff to bring back an item to appoint Diego Castillo as a permanent member of the Planning Commission as well as start an application process to fill the vacancy that would be created on the Planning Commission.
Would that be to start a process or to fill the vacancy by Diego Castillo? To start the process? Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion on the floor by Councilmember Upal, second by Councilmember Roth and, uh, do we have to go back and then did he already officially amend his motion?
Yes.
Right? Okay, so you just wanted to make sure. Okay, so then, this time I'm going to go out for public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone in regards to this item? 9:46. Hearing and un, coming back to the chamber, is there any citizen comments in the chamber? Seeing and un, closing the public comment at 9:47. Roll call, please.
So I just want to confirm, you stated that you want the item to be brought back, you want an item to be brought back to appoint Diego Castillo as the regular planning commissioner and to start soliciting applications for the alternate position for 30, solicit for 30 days?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Roll call, Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Upal?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 4-0.
Thank you. Item number 11, discussion and direction regarding Parks Recreation and Arts Commission vacancies. Jackie, welcome back.
So I had, we have right now three vacancies. Jessica Betshart, her four years of service was up on January the 30th and Melissa Verning, Cypher's Verning, has moved to Turlock, so her, she was an alternate. Jessica has turned in an application to continue her service with the commission so that if the council approves her, then we would have just the two alternates. I did want to let you guys know that even as of last fall, we have kept the position open and continue to advertise on the website and to whoever will listen to us about joining the commission and so it has been left, the, the position has been continuously promoted.
Okay. All right, so it would be three, for the three vacancies, but right now you have an application from Jessica and then, so maybe council can also consider coming back and appoint Jessica and then open, open, open the applications for the vacancies right now and then bring it back in 30 days for the two alternates.
And it has been ongoing, so the next time we come back, it would say six months, it's been open looking for somebody.
Okay. All right, council, any other questions, comments at this time? So I, I will go out for public comment at this time and then if, I'll bring it back and then we'll go from there. Thank you very much. You've been so patiently waiting for us. So at this time, I will go out for public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone? 9:50. Hearing and un, coming back to the chamber at 9:50. Any citizen comments in the chamber? Bringing it back to a dais, closing the citizen comments at 9:50. Counsel, so what do you guys think of the, to do something similar with, for recreation? Appoint, just bring, bring it back and appoint Jessica and bring back to, or applications that are, will be turned in for 30 days or in a month from now? I will make that as a motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion on the floor by Mayor Moran, second by Councilmember Upal. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember, Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Upal?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 4-0.
Thank you. Item number 12, discussion and direction on dissolving the AHCA committee for over the counter building permits application process.
Mayor, this item was added to the agenda at the request of Councilmember Roth and Mayor Protam Samra.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For me, yes, I did put this item on the agenda. As we all know that sometime back, I don't remember the exact date, but we did form an ad hoc committee for, to discuss, you know, regarding water issues to, to me, I thought it was going to be a good idea, but it's just a layer bureaucracy that doesn't do any good. We have Public Works Director, we have the City Engineer and we have staff that is supposed to see that. To, if, it's their responsibility, they're supposed to be responsible enough to whether to issue permits or not to issue permits. To add a public meeting to discuss that, I think it serves no purpose because if the, and I'm only using as an if, okay? Say that City Engineer says we have the capacity or we have the whatever, issues it and it doesn't work, that person has to answer for their decision. For us to add another layer, I think it serves no purpose. To me, I think we need to go back to the way it was, dissolve this committee and let the staff make the decisions.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm on that ad hoc and we haven't met in quite some time, but I think that staff should be able to do their jobs, you know, the way they, what they're getting paid to do, you know? They can make those choices and if there's a problem, then, you know, they have the interim city manager now, but then they're going to have a city manager and the attorney, so I think that they should be able to do their own job the correct way. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel? Yes, go ahead.
I have a question and I do apologize for not mentioning this with staff prior to the meeting. Mr. Roth just mentioned that the group hasn't met in a while. Assuming the ad hoc committee was not dissolved tonight, are there any meetings that would be coming up at any point soon in the future though? Any, any point in the future that we can anticipate?
So Anthony is the lead for the ad hoc. I know that I directed the, the staff to bring some outstanding items back in December to the ad hoc. I'll defer to Anthony on what plans, if any, that they had.
Yeah, to answer that question, Councilmember Upal, there would be a couple more in the queue that we need, we would need to meet on.
Do you expect those might happen within like the next month, potentially two months? Do you have any anticipated timeline?
Potentially within the next month.
And assuming that the ad hoc is dissolved tonight, whatever decision would be made in the ad hoc, do we know where that final decision would lie or is that just a conjunction between Public Works and City Engineer?
Either way, I think we can make a decision.
Okay, thank you.
Anthony, if I can ask you another question or if anybody else has additional input, I'm not going to, I don't think I'm going to put you on the spot, but, but from your perspective, was, was it effective to have an AHCA in place for this item? Was it effective? Was it productive or you feel that you could get better things done without the AHCA in place?
So you are putting me on the spot, just to be clear, but I, honestly, I feel it delayed the process. Little more red tape that we have to go through to get to the end.
Okay. Yes.
I would just say, Mr. Mayor, the, the process would be still the same as if the ad hoc committee was there except for the items wouldn't be taken to the ad hoc committee. Public Works Engineering would take it directly to the building official.
Mayor, I will also dovetail on that. The process by which staff would identify the available water capacity, to Roy's point, would not change. The only difference is that there wouldn't be the coordination of a meeting between the members of the ad hoc, but the process itself stays the same. Staff would still be required to identify what water capacity is being utilized and what capacity, what water capacity is still available. So in terms of, the only difference that this would do is, would only prevent the ad hoc group that was appointed by the council to have to meet and make these findings themselves. The staff would still be required to make these findings.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I think it's easier for staff to say, hey, do you have a hour or two hours on your calendar? Let's get together and work on this issue, then trying to agendize a meeting and trying to get everybody to attend a meeting. I think it's more efficient for the city, for everybody, to let the staff do the job like they used to.
You know, as I reflect, I was trying to remember, but I think Councilmember Upal or somebody in this council mentioned something, you know, or asked the question, it's like, how do we have checks and balances? How do we know when things are being done right or properly or how do we know when the decision that was made is the correct decision? But at the end of the day also, you know, it's, I'm not sure, and, and I think that's when that item was brought to council and that AHCA committee was set up in place to kind of see how, what the process was like and see if, if the additional members of the AHCA committee would be able to provide additional knowledge or input or ideas. But one of the requirements was not to have the AHCA come back and report to the council. So in a way, even though there was two of you guys there, the rest of the council was not aware of what was happening. So, but I think as part of the, I guess, what might be like the growing pains of the city or of the department is, is that sometimes, probably to answer the question was, I don't think, I don't know if there, there would be checks and balances to make sure that what things are being done are correct and not just have to wait until after the fact and then we have to like kind of fix the problem, you know? So I'm not sure if the AHCA committee was the proper way of having those checks and balances or if even having checks and balances was even the right thing to do. So I don't know if that makes sense, but...
Mr. Mayor, may I comment?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I do agree that having checks and balances is the right thing to do. Whether or not the ad hoc was the best route to go is up to debate. I would like to say, I, I don't want to, I don't want to add more red tape for staff. I think our opinions on the issue have been made very clear, concerns have been brought up very directly. That being said, there, there still are concerns that I have and I'm sure some of those are shared going forward related to the issue and, and I just ask, is there, is there another way of, of being in the loop without needing an ad hoc? I know the city manager is really good about keeping us in the loop on certain things, I do appreciate. I, I don't, I would like to stay in the loop on decisions that are made without stepping on staff's toes and I guess I'd essentially ask staff, is without the ad hoc, is there a reasonable way that you find to do that? Like just reporting about decisions that are being made, whether it's an email, a memo, a monthly, biweekly, whatever it is?
So, Councilmember, just a brief response to that. I think as Roy and I mentioned, the process hasn't changed. The only difference is you remove the meeting of the ad hocs. I think a simple thing and you mentioned it is, you know, have the staff develop the memo forwarded to the city manager's office. City manager's office then provides it to the council. As Mayor Protam Samra said, it's a quick meeting between engineering and public works director to make those findings. They put it in a memo, send it to the city manager and the city manager sends it to the council. I think that's a really easy thing without having to bring the ad hoc together. The findings are made, the process stays the same and the council has the information that it needs.
I can get by that if the rest of the council is okay with that, keeps us in the loop. We have any concerns, we bring them up and we let staff do what they got to do. Can, would we motion to direct that or is that just general practice?
If you're going to open it for public, Mr. Mayor, before I...
I was going to do that next, but...
Sorry, sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
No, I was going to say, after you open it, I will make a motion, but go ahead and open first.
Thank you. So at this time, 10:01, I'm going to open the public comment in regards to this item. Anyone on the phone? Hearing and un, bringing it back to the chamber. Is there any public comment in the chamber in regards to this item?
I think in general, anything the council can do to streamline the process and development is great and I, to piggyback on one of the comments that was made earlier, that some of the services like, like engineering and maybe building are being subsidized, it's because you guys don't have enough workflow. If you had more workflow, I mean, you guys have a great building official right now. He could be doing 10 times the amount of inspections he's doing. So that's 10 times the amount of building permits, but obviously we can't apply for building permits because there's no water. So if you want to help with, you know, reduce the cost of the development, you have to bring in more projects. So you guys got to figure out how to balance that out. I mean, it doesn't make sense to bring in in-house planning or in-house, whatever you want, because we can't issue any permits. So you figure that portion out first.
Thank you. Is there any additional comments in the chamber? Seeing and un, closing the citizen comments at 10:02, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I made the motion to dissolve the ad hoc committee.
So we have a motion on the floor by Mayor Protam Samra. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Who was that?
Said, "I will second it."
Okay.
Really quick, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Samra, if it's okay, Chris, for the exact process that you mentioned, could we add that into a motion for direction? Would that just be assumed by staff?
I would include that as part of the motion and the process that's been identified is in the staff report that's been utilized. So I would add that to the motion to make sure that your concern about making sure that the council gets the information is included in that motion for clarity.
All right, now, you got me, repeat that one more time, Mr. Lopez.
So the first step of the motion is to dissolve the ad hoc. The second part is what Councilmember Upal said, which is ensure that the staff follows the process as has been identified, providing the findings as dictated or found in the process, providing that memo to the city manager and that the city manager provides that to the council.
Okay, I'm not going to repeat that, but I will make the motion and then amend it with what the city manager just said. Thank you.
So, Councilmember Roth, do you accept the amendment?
Yes, I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Upal?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 4-0.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Before we move to the next item, I finished damn near the entire water bottle and I could really use like two minutes, if that's okay?
All right, you got two minutes.
Well, you gave him a long time.
We have a two-minute break.
That's a long time. He's young.
He's young.
And it's a good opportunity for me to also offer that opportunity for anybody else that wants to participate and be, be the one that can take my spot on this one voice trip. So, and since we only have two others here, I know Mr. Roth, he participated last year. He had that experience, and I think he would be a good candidate to be able to go back this year and since he already has prior knowledge in Mr. O'Paul, which I think would also do great if they both accept to participate in the one voice trip.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to go in your place. Thank you very much. It was a great experience last, last time I went last year. There's a lot of things in Washington that you don't realize, and a lot of the meetings that we went to and attended, it's very in-depth, so I'm honored to go again. Thank you.
I would love to go. I really appreciate being given the opportunity to go by the two of you. Obviously, political nerd, love lobbying, would love to go to DC. Really excited to be able to represent our priorities there, so thank you.
Councilmember O'Paul, would this be your first trip to DC at any level?
Uh, yes, it would.
What I would recommend that you watch on Netflix, The Hustle Cards. So you know how they work over there?
I'm one step ahead of you. I'm watching it right now, actually.
And also, you know, they have that starting that show some of the areas, so maybe you want to take a picture of that, you know, standing there, so, okay? Thank you.
We'll make the rounds.
All right, at this time, I will go out for public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone in regards to item number 13? 10:12, bringing it back to the chambers. Is there any public comment in the chamber? Seeing none, bringing it back to, closing the public comment at 10:12, bringing it back to a dais. So I will go ahead and make a motion to appoint Council-
Mr. Mayor, before you motion to appoint us both, it's listed in the item, and Mr. Lopez mentioned it as well, identifying potential priorities as a council. Are we planning on submitting those priorities to MCAG?
Yes, they've already been submitted to MCAG. I think the council identified them, goodness, probably in October of last year. And so right now, we're in the middle of gathering the information, primarily pictures to send over to MCAG so that they can put together the packet.
And as quickly as possible, please contact MCAG that you'll be attending, because they do need some, depending on which buildings they can go to, you will need a prior security clearance.
Right. I actually met Ben Goldin at the Merced City County Relations Dinner in Gustine, and we had talked already, and I let him know that I might be given the chance to go. So I have his contact. Probably hit him up tomorrow to get up to speed. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will go ahead and make a motion to appoint Councilmember Roth and Councilmember O'Paul for the one voice trip.
I will second it.
Motion by Mayor Moran, second by Mayor Protam. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Paul?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 4-0.
Thank you. Item number 14, status update on council direction given on August 20, 2024 regarding administrative fee for solid waste recycling and organics collection services, processing, maintenance, and enforcement.
Mayor, Councilmember O'Paul and Mayor Moran requested this item be brought to the council for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I requested this item at the December 17th, 2024 meeting, and similar to the franchise fee item, I prepared some slides that I'd like to share if the rest of the council is okay with it, to provide a background, go through all the discussions that have been had, be very clear about what this is and where we're at, and then discuss how we may want to move forward. I will say, this one's not going to be as pretty, but let's get into it. So admin fee, Gilton Waste Collection Services. As was mentioned earlier, there's two separate fees in discussion tonight. There's a franchise fee, which is a 15% fee on all revenues, and then there's an administrative fee. So this admin fee definition, I pulled this verbatim from a staff report that was presented by, I believe, Happy and Anthony. In the past, administrative fee is a fee that's imposed by the city to be a reasonable estimate of the approximate cost for city personnel to provide a service. So as the city manager mentioned earlier, we have multiple staff members in the city of Livingston who are doing work to process bills and all things related to refuse services, waste collection services, and this administrative fee is the cost that the city pays its staff for providing those services. Some background, so the city has historically charged an administrative fee as required. Obviously, the city needs to pay its staff. However, council may not have even been aware of this. I certainly wasn't until I looked into it. Gilton used to couple this admin fee with their refuse rate. So when residents would see their garbage bill, they were not explicitly aware that they were paying for this admin fee. However, when they would pay their bill in total, a percentage of that the city would keep to pay its staff for providing those services. And in this last negotiation, Gilton decided to actually separate their fee from the city's admin fee, and this is verbatim pulled from the contract with Gilton. This was included in the February 20, 2024 staff report. You can see a line there, which in different type of font, that says that the city will establish a separate administrative fee for processing solid waste billing. So the actual cost of this fee, this is an estimate that was provided in 2024. Those four components in the top four boxes that will make up the administrative fee, from employee allocations to salaries to maintenance, was estimated to be $530,000 at the time. This was the breakdown per parcel, per month, per resident at the time. So that breaking down into 3,500 accounts, it's $151 per year for each account, which is a $12.63 fee that would be passed on to the residents if it got approved to get to that end. Costs as of today, shout out to Happy for getting me this information. I asked if these numbers were still accurate, and it looks like it's actually gone up. So the total expenditure is actually $588,000, which comes out to about $168.28, and for a monthly charge of $14.02 per account. And so if we decided to pass this on to residents, it would be an increased cost in their bill of $14.02 per month. So what happened with this admin fee? On March 19, 2024, council expressed for the first time discomfort with the admin fee. The mayor protam suggested getting into a Prop 218 process because we were increasing rates. On April 16, 2024, the council did not approve the admin fee via resolution. They provided direction to staff to commence the Prop 218 process. I did want to note that the Prop 218 process was not legally required. However, council felt that it would be in the best interest of the city and its residents to still go through that process. On August 6, 2024, council was given the option to commence the Prop 218 process as prepared by the attorney. During that meeting, the mayor protam requested a meeting with staff to ask specific questions and gather more information before commencing the process. On August 28, 2024, two weeks later, when this item was brought back, the mayor protam expressed frustration over staff not reaching out to request a meeting with him, and the council that night provided explicit direction to continue this item only once the mayor protam had had that meeting with staff. And it's my understanding that that meeting has not yet taken place, which is why this item never came back. And so during the December 17th meeting, I requested that this item come back. I do feel like not all of these conversations we're having in good faith, and I did want to present that very clearly to council, and it leads to another point that I like to present. And so I want to say this now, the purpose of this is to not call on anybody personally, but is to hold each other accountable as a council. Monica, can you please play the meeting from where it starts here? So this is from the August 6, 20, meeting, and it should load from the timestamp that I included. Are you able to play it?
Awareness Month.
Unappropriately on a time, we weren't, people weren't protecting the city of Livingston. So it's a good point that you bring up. The fact that it was done in the past for the events is-
It's not checking you. I have the timestamps on me if you're able to present them on the screen.
Look at the-
Is that possible?
Whether the city is collecting enough for solid waste.
Again, I do feel this is important to highlight, and you'll see why, if we can get it up.
And it's, for me-
Then, again, the cost that- And if we can't get it on the actual screen, just the audio will work as well, since we can hear, and I can give you the exact time spans.
The use form was submitted by the group.
To the city manager, it's done, and complained that they were-
That they were brought up in the past, and I will go through the process of seeing who else will collaborate with me, because it doesn't seem that many of my items never got brought to this council.
Anything else?
Do we have, Mr. Mayor, do we have, I know textile industries, foster farms, are that the only two that have unlimited water set rate in the city? I brought that up to city council a long time ago.
Are we able to get exactly to 11825?
Who has unlimited water, other than textile industries and foster farms?
Of the video? So for this-
We're not aware of in the city that-
So for this August 6th meeting, could you please play the clip from 11825 to 11836?
I'm not sure who in the city would be able to answer that, but maybe if you forward that-
Sorry, I apologize.
In an email question to Mr. Lopez, and then Mr. Lopez can send it out. I think that'll be the best way. Deciding to be table until next meeting for further clarification and additional information. I, I guess we have no option, so, you know.
I humbly request.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, you know? So, all right, so, yeah, that's fine. Next.
Thank you.
All right.
And Chris, I will contact you to set up an appointment to meet with staff, okay?
I was just sending the email to Monica to reach out to you, but that's fine.
All right, thank you.
Monica, can you please pause it there? Did want to point out on the record that the mayor protam said he would reach out to staff, and that the staff was in process of preparing an email to the mayor protam that they didn't send. And then can you please now go to the next slide from the August 20th meeting? So the August 20th meeting, and the timestamps are there as well, you can start this from 2:21 to about 2:21:33. Is the clip I wanted to reference?
Because I don't appreciate-
No motions, no direction, then this just-
How about we do away with the franchise fee and incorporate the administrative fee?
And that's precisely why I wanted me with staff. See if there's alternatives. But unfortunately, that's not the way it worked out the last two weeks. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, I wasn't going to say anything, but since Mayor Protam continues to bring it up. If fee forward, our response was, was, okay, I was just sending the email to Monica to reach out to you, but that's fine. Our response was, was, okay, I was just sending the email to Monica to reach out to you, but that's fine.
That's not what I said. I said-
And I'm happy to send it to the council.
I said, Mr. Lopez, please reach out to me. I'd like to set up a meeting with you and your staff. I said to reach out to me.
Monica, can you go to the next slide?
I'm sending the video to the council, and the council can just see for what that's worth, because I don't appreciate being told that I was unresponsive.
And can you please start this clip from 2:36, 15 of the August 20th meeting? And can you please start this clip from two thirty six fifteen of the August twentieth meeting? I apologize again to the public. I was late in putting these slides up and we probably could have accounted for that if I wasn't.
To be clear, I also put that motion forward to move forward. So yes. Mayor Pro Tem Samra.
Remember, it is after the meeting. If a meeting doesn't happen, it's not coming forward.
Can you pause it right there, Monica? So just to confirm, it was decided there that motion was approved by the council that the meeting would not come back. The item related to a Prop two eighteen measure for this admin fee would not come back until the mayor pro temp had a meeting with staff. Monica, can you please go to the next slide? Sorry, I can do that. Or can I not? No. I am not. Can you go to the next slide, please? Do you want me to try again from my end? So could you go back to the 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 slide right before this one? So I was not aware that this item was explicitly only going to come back once the mayor pro temp met with staff. And that was brought to my attention uh recently, started digging into it more. And so I actually asked staff, have we reached out? What is the process of this? And this is what I received. These are all the emails that have been sent to the mayor pro temp since August twentieth uh to schedule this meeting. Uh this is some initial outreach in August uh from Monica to the mayor pro temp looking to schedule a meeting. Uh this is follow up in September uh to get something on the calendar. This is follow up in October to get something on the calendar. Mind you, this item cannot come back as explicitly given council direction until this meeting takes place. This is December outreach in regards to bringing this item back. And we're now in February and it's my understanding that this meeting has not taken place. Mr. Lopez or Monica, please collect me if I'm wrong.
That's correct. The meeting is not taking place.
So this item, as council direction was given, could not come back until this meeting took place. Following the August twentieth meeting and now it's February fourth. It's been damn near six months and I apologize for the language there. This meeting has yet to take place. And this is highly relevant to this item, which I'll get into um because it it's bleeding our budget. Just because the residents are not paying this fee out of their garbage bill, doesn't mean that the city is not covering this administrative expense. It's coming out of a sanitation fund, as I'll get into. And I I wanted to bring this up. I made a comment about accountability earlier. I like to say this to the mayor pro temp. This is nothing personal, no personal attack on you as a person. But the way that I feel that you handled this issue in those clips, one saying that you would reach out to city manager to get a meeting scheduled and then bashing city manager two weeks later for not getting it. And then saying you wanted questions answered and you would schedule a meeting with staff and now it's been six months and this meeting hasn't been taken place. I find that highly unprofessional. I think it's holding our city back and clearly there's a lack of accountability here. I I haven't seen anybody reference it and I know. Any for any staff member to say that to a council member, I understand why that can be difficult, just given the leadership dynamic that exists and I don't necessarily expect you to do that. Obviously, we have fifteen thousand bosses in the city, but nobody's mentioned that and it it's hard to go back and and really dig into this unless you're not trying to. This is what I've spent the last three days doing. And 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 to me, there there's just a complete lack of accountability there. Uh just a comfort with letting this continue down the road and and not have anything move forward. And I made this comment during our reports that feedback from the community was heard about us not holding each other accountable. I believe we're all on the same team here and it's up to us as a council to hold each other accountable, which is why I wanted to bring this up. We we have to move each other forward. We have to have friction with one another um and we can't, we can't just sit back idly as these things happen. And now to this comment of a bleeding budget, there's about forty five thousand dollars that are coming out of our sanitation fund monthly to cover this expense. The council decided not to pass this over to the residents in March. Staff still need to be paid for for doing their jobs. So right now that's coming out of a separate city fund, our sanitation fund. And monthly, it's about forty five grand that's coming out to cover. Current balance of this fund is around six hundred thousand, as was relayed to me by staff recently. And so within the next fiscal year, if we don't do anything about this administrative fee, we are going to drain this sanitation fund entirely and we're gonna come back and we're gonna say, now how are we gonna pay for it? Now, we can decide what mechanism we want to use, but to just sit here idly and not do anything about it is very irresponsible. And unless this item was brought back, this funding would have just continued to drain and we would have came back at whatever point and said, what are we gonna do? So I I'd like for us to move on that now and and not get to that point. We 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 must address this issue like it's been mentioned. We can't keep picking the can down the road. And the money has to come from somewhere, whether we add it to our bill, whether we try to use some franchise fee funding to alleviate the expense. We can't just walk out of here with this not being paid for because as of right now, the way I see it is unless I requested this item on December seventeenth, this would not have came back. And we would have been sitting here a year from now saying, what are we gonna do? And so I I I have something that I'll offer and it may not be popular and we can discuss how we'd like to take it from here. I don't like the idea of raising rates to our residents. I understand very, I'm not gonna say very well. I have an idea of the socioeconomic uh condition of our community and there's no part of me that takes pleasure in raising anybody's bill by fourteen dollars. But like it's been mentioned, there is a cost of doing business that we just can't avoid. And so the only question I'd ask council is if we're not going to add this on to the bill, how are we gonna pay for this? Because right now we have no concrete plan and we're just draining city funds. So what I would propose is we just approve some of our franchise fee funding to be help alleviate some of these expenses. What I would propose that council do is use whatever we have from that to offset this administrative expense. And whatever the difference is that isn't paid for by the franchise fee, we take that into the garbage bill. Again, there's no part of me that likes raising people's bills. You never want to do that. I know it's a very unpopular thing to do, but I think we have a responsibility to manage the city unless we we can identify another mechanism, we have to pay from the source i- is my opinion. Um I I'd rather be, I'd rather be the guy that, you know, made a financially responsible decision than was was too scared because I was afraid of of what the community was gonna say after. And at this point in time, pending staff and or council's opinions, I think that's the best way to move forward. Um so I so I know that was super long and and again, to the mayor pro temp, nothing personal. I I just don't feel like this was handled professionally by any means. And and we can't allow as a council allow that uh to continue moving forward. Um so curious to hear anybody's thoughts and I'll let you guys take it from there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh Councilmember Opal, in a way, you are correct what you said. But do you, and I'm not gonna say this in open meeting because I know legal is gonna jump all over me. But you also know the other pending issues. You notice I had to abstain from one of the items. Uh I'd be more than happy to talk with you why with the attorney present if you wish. But I'm not gonna talk about this in open meeting. It's easy for you to say, why didn't you? But you don't know the other side of it. You know, so I would say I'd be more than happy to sit with you, with the attorney. And we'll I'll be we'll be able to more than more than happy to do that. And I think you'll have a better understanding of what happened.
I think that's completely fair. You have, obviously, th- this was very like I I called out uh your past actions. You have every right to defend them if you and the attorney are comfortable with that. I'm more than happy to have that conversation. I'd still say it's it's at least worth an email to say there's reasons why this can't be done. And to to the other point, there was no other action taken to move this item forward, even if it wasn't that meeting with staff. Like if there are, there are legitimate reasons preventing it from taking place, I don't know your perspective, don't know the situation. It's I completely understand that point. However, council has been very comfortable with not doing anything about this. And again, there was no action taken to move this forward and I I still take very, very strong uh distaste with that.
Well, I would too, but it's unfair in a way when you when you're only looking at half of the story, not the other half. You and I never had any discussion of why you didn't have the meeting. You never did. Uh and maybe should have had that discussion. Hey, is there a reason why you didn't have that me uh meeting? You know, so we will have a discussion and we can get with the and it needs to be you, me and the attorney, nobody else. Because I won't feel comfortable any other way.
I'm okay with that. The attorney's down for that, yeah?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I said I'm okay with that as long as the attorney is good with that as well.
Yeah, we will.
I would say as as long as the majority of the council wishes me to attend that meeting, I I will.
Yes.
Now, moving forward, obviously, this still needs direction. Again, we are bleeding forty five thousand dollars from our sanitation fund monthly. And if we do not identify another funding mechanism or at least set a plan forward in the next fiscal year, this funding will drain in its entirety and we will then come back and try to figure something else out. So I I had proposed something to council. Whether or not you agree with it, I'd be curious to know how you'd like to move forward on the item.
With the uh Mr. Mathrill, you have cars. With the franchise fee coming back into the solid waste, we can look at administrative fees, see what the actual markup is gonna be because there will be some offset from the franchise fees coming into the solid waste. So that number will not be what you said is because that number didn't take into account that how much is coming into the solid waste. You're looking at what the total money is in the solid waste, what the charges are. But that money coming in, it's gonna offset a lot of those administrative charges. So numbers will be entirely different.
I'm I'm okay with taking a look at that, getting some final numbers before setting uh a very clear direction. I'm curious to hear what else council thinks.
So, you know, um but I'm speechless. You know, but it's um I I think it's a a conversation that was long overdue, you know, um and and it's unfortunate that this conversation didn't happen before. And uh part of the conversation that was brought, one one of the points that was brought up earlier uh and the same conversation that was we we discussed before and I meant we mentioned was that roughly about fifty thousand dollars was was not being collected, you know, and 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 this is what's happening now. Uh eventually in a year, it was over five hundred thousand dollars, close to six hundred thousand dollars. And one thing for sure, you know, uh once again, I said it earlier. Um if we need to have a service that needs to be provided to our customers, to our residents, someone has to pay it. And if even if we say that the city, if council decides and says, okay, city, we're gonna pay for it. But in reality, who's paying for it? The residents. Because who are we collecting money from? From the residents. It just means that we're just moving money around and we're just making it look like like we're, you know, we're not charging uh an additional fee, but at the end of the day, the one that ends up suffering and still paying for it is 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 us, the residents. So, you know, it's and, you know, I can only assume potentially, you know, there's different reasons of uh different reasons of why certain things are being done, you know, just to, you know, because politically, they're probably not the most popular thing to do. But if we are here on this die as being elected, you know, we should not, you know, once someone is worried about what their political status is, how how is that's going to be affected, then you're in the wrong position. You shouldn't be worried about whether or not it's gonna be popular or unpopular and whether or not you're gonna be elected or reelected or not elected next time around because you made, you know, you raised the cost by six dollars, then you're in the wrong position, then you're not doing what is best for the community, for the majority of the community. We're never gonna have a hundred percent agreement on anything. But what if we ever have a hundred percent agreement on anything, then there's something wrong. There's something wrong, you know, um and 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 that's why we're here. We were elected to make the tough decisions for every for for fifteen thousand people out there. You know, uh and this is, this was and is one of those tough decisions. You know, and and if 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 whatever we do becomes unpopular, then let it be. Then, you know, you did the right thing at that time and that's it, you know. Uh but uh, you know, uh I'm glad we're having this conversation and uh I will ask for additional comments, recommendations from the council before I go out for public comment.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment real quick?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh before I go, before we go out to public comment, um uh they're they're both here tonight and obviously the item's coming up next. I would be curious to to know what our our two potential candidates uh think of this item. I know they both read a lot, obviously both sat on council. They were here when this was last discussed. Um and so, yeah, just curious to hear if you're willing to come up and speak uh what you think about how what you think about what council should do about this item and if you were sitting on the council tonight voting on this, how you might take that.
So at this time, I will go out for public comment. Let me go out. Someone on the phone, is there anyone on the phone? Here and now, uh come back to the chamber at ten forty two. Public comment in the chamber.
Thank you, Councilmember Paul. I was planning on coming up on to address this item because seeing it on this perspective and I watched that video that night in regards to what took place. I do believe that the conversation went that the administrator fee has always been a part of the city billing. But we had our city manager and our attorney that made it more transparent for the public to understand that they have always been paying it. So whether it's being paid through different sources of funding, the residents in the long run are paying that bill. Whether it's coming from the general fund, which I believe is it's happening now, the residents are still paying that bill. So I don't trying to figure out what the conversation would have been between Pro Tem and yourself that it has to involve the uh city attorney. I'm not sure if the conversation is going to be part of addressing the admin fee or is this a a battle? Are you wanting a mediator to hash this out? Because I'm not comfortable seeing it that way of paying a city attorney to have uh an item settled that can't be discussed in full transparency. So I I I'm not sure where what you had at or what Mayor Pro Tem has wanted the request of the city attorney to be present for when the two of you might be well, might be able to discuss it. Because I was lost in that. I don't know if you're discussing an admin fee or if you guys are just wanting to hash that out because that night I remember it. Um we're both there. Uh it was very um you in fact came out from the audience with that same video as well as city manager to to play it and anyways, the admin fee, someone is gonna be paying it, whether it's through the general fund as it is now, but we've always been paying it. The residents, that cost is in the at the end is paid by us, all of those that pay the utility bill for our soul. That we had asked. That we had asked.
Thank you. Is there any additional comments in the chamber? I'm not sure if Mr. Wallace wants to come up, or anybody else? Yes, please stay forward. Say your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Parwan Drew Paul. I just wanted to clarify, historically, when this admin fee has been administered, and it's been grouped in with the guilt and fee, non-disclosed to the public, they probably were unaware of it, was that being paid by residents just in their monthly bill, not through some sort of city fund? Right, that's what I thought. So if that's the case, was, I don't, I don't, I don't understand why the admin fee is now being subsidized by the city and causing this issue in the first place, if it was, if it has always been paid by consumers, if it's simply because now they're seeing the words that it's an administrative fee, but it's the exact same fee that they've always been paying, that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, now all of a sudden pick up that cost and put it on the city? I mean, if we can afford it, and we're rolling in dough, I mean, that's fine, I guess you can take that cost away from the consumer, but if that's not the case, and it's causing problems to our, for our funds, and trying to figure out how to allocate this, and we're bleeding forty-five thousand dollars from a fund that shouldn't be paying for it, which is going to go dry soon enough, and we've got to then solve that problem again, I don't really understand why that cost was removed from customers. This problem could have probably been avoided, it seems to me, if it was never removed in the first place. Because now, if that cost is just directed right back onto consumers, now it's going to, now it's going to look like an additional fee is being thrown onto them, when it could have, and should have, and has always been there in the first place. So unless I'm missing something there, please, any of you feel free to provide some sort of a context there. But it seems to me that it was a fee that has always been there, was removed for reasons that are beyond my understanding, and is now causing us fiscal issues, and is going to look like it's causing consumers fiscal issues if it's sent back to the residents of Livingston. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any additional comments in the chamber, regards to this item? Okay, seeing now, I'm closing the public comments at ten forty-eight, bringing it back to the dais. So legal, so I do have a question now, that I was just reflecting on the request to have Mayor Protem and Councilmember Paul have a meeting by two council members, because this item was already in open session, and now they're going to have potentially a conversation about this same item, and then council, then this has to be brought back to open session, and that information has to be provided to the rest of the council, or not?
The discussion would be why the meeting never took place, not about anything on this item.
Okay, so if it's, okay, so then, would that information have to, would have to be disclosed in open session to the rest of the council, to make sure that Brown Act is not violated? Because then otherwise, they're having their own private conversations when, when this item was already discussed in open session.
What I will say is that I don't believe my presence is necessary for that conversation, which is why I said if a majority of the council would like me to attend, I will, because I don't want to build a sedief for a private conversation between Councilmember Paul and the Mayor Protem relating to his reasons for not meeting, or for the meeting not taking I can attend that meeting, it's not, if it's not related to the franchise fee itself, meaning the substance of what is going to be discussed by the council and how decisions are made, then it's not a Brown Act issue, if they're just talking about other issues outside of an action that's pending before the city. If it goes into areas that would relate to actions that are pending before the council, or could become pending before the council, then that would be a Brown Act concern.
And then also, so I'm just thinking, if this meeting or this concern, or the request to have this meeting is just to explain or share the reason of why Mayor Protem never had a meeting with staff, but staff is not only Mr. Lopez, staff is Anthony, is engineering, is building, is Monica, is everybody else. So if the main reason was to not have a meeting with Mr. Lopez, that meeting could always have happened without Mr. Lopez being present, so, and then that way, we didn't have to wait six months until now, and probably that's not going to make a difference, even after your meeting, if what I'm thinking, that is just because of the reason of why you didn't want to meet with Mr. Lopez. And then even if you, even if anybody, even if any one of us had an issue with Mr. Lopez, we could always request it to have another staff member present as a third party, as a third person in that meeting, just to, you know, if there was a concern of, of having to meet with, with anyone that I'm not getting along with, or, you know? So I really don't see what changed that meeting would potentially make for this item now, you know, but I'll leave it up to the majority of the council, or request if there's a motion to continue this item, you know? But then again, it's, another month is going to be another forty-five thousand dollars.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment?
Yes.
So in all fairness to the Mayor Protem, obviously I called him out, I feel like he has every right to respond to me as he needs to. Whether or not the attorney needs to be present, or the council would like for that to be the case, I think on my end, it's not fair for me to have a say in that, because just again, as an individual, I feel like he has every right to call me out, on this item, I mean, to respond to me, I'm sorry. On this item specifically, I would like us, I don't want to table it entirely and just wait for a meeting, whether or not it happens, I would like for us to at least discuss what we think about moving forward, and hopefully provide some very clear direction on how we'd like to move forward. As I proposed earlier, I would, we just balance our general fund deficit with franchise fee funds, and we dedicated a portion of that to go into solid waste for precisely this purpose. We explicitly mentioned the administrative fee during that discussion, and that we could use that funding to offset the administrative fee. What I propose that the council do is dedicate that excess franchise fee funding into this administrative expense, figure out exactly how much the difference is between what we're offsetting and what's still left to pay, and then from that point, I don't know if we necessarily have to increase the rate that much every month. I'm actually in favor of a phased approach, potentially two dollars at a time, a dollar at a time. I am certainly in favor of passing this into the bill, as it's always been, there's a cost of doing business, and as much as the community obviously would not see their bill go up, I think they're smart enough to understand that there's a cost of doing business, and that we legally are not allowed to profit from that, nor which are we doing? And so if council is in favor of a phased approach, potentially a dollar at a time, two dollars at a time, whether it's every month, two months, quarterly, I'm open to discussing what that could look like. So at least it's not a very immediate and stressful burden on the residents, and it also gives us time to better communicate that, have those conversations, and folks to be ready for the rate increases that may occur.
Counsel, anything else? So, you know, once again, I have always been of the idea that it would be not adequate to just wait, continue waiting until we have to raise the fees, the cost to the consumer, all a big chunk of money all at once, you know? Now we have funding that is going to dry out pretty soon, and, you know, and then again, at the end of the day, the ones that are going to suffer is going to be the residents, because now they have to pay up with, to create those savings again. And once again, it goes back to passing, kicking the can down the road. That's what it is, you know? Whether this was not addressed before or not, I mean, that's history, in a way, but now we have it before us, and we have to come up with a plan. Phasing it out, I mean, is better than doing nothing, you know, even if it's two, three dollars. You know, because even if we raise it, if we do phases and raise it a dollar a month, I'm not sure if there's going to be like additional staff time that is going to be, that is going to be required to do that, you know, instead of saying, okay, let's just raise it three dollars now, and three dollars in six months, and three dollars in nine months, and so on. If that makes any sense, instead of a dollar every month, you know? Because at the end of the day, it's still going to be the same amount of money. We still need to cover the cost. We might not be paying for it, right, or the residents, you know, it's just, it's just a lie, really. I mean, we're just lying to the people and saying, you're not paying for it. Well, you are paying for it, because you are the ones that gave the city the money. I mean, you know? So that's just my thought at this point. Counsel, anything else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I do like the idea of what Chapjeet said, phasing it in one to two, three dollars, or whatever, but I would like to see it written on paper, or a little presentation if we can, and I'm not opposed to that.
Can we, go ahead, Mr. Santos.
Thank you. I think one method to get counsel, I think, in heading in the direction would be potentially a motion giving staff direction to bring this item back at the next council meeting with the information that you requested, meaning how much is generated from the franchise fee, how much the actual costs are, administrative fee costs, what the difference is, once, you know, you supplement or offset the admin fee with the franchise fee, and then, then at that time, a discussion could be had on the phase approach, whether it's, you know, a monthly, a quarterly, or a yearly approach, however council wants to do that, but I think that would be the legally prudent approach to address this issue.
Thank you, Roy. Councilmember, I think one of the things that came into my mind, you know, barring any sort of changes on the expenditure side, the expenditure side is going to be, I think, what Happy put out, which was six hundred thousand dollars. And so that expenditure is going to remain the same. If I'm hearing you and Councilmember Roth correctly, I think one of the things that may make sense for Happy to maybe take some notes on, is that we do the transfer that we had talked about earlier, with the balance of the franchise fee going back into the solid waste fund, and then we potentially look at, and this is where Happy would have to do some financial maneuvering, is if we wanted to have a phased-in approach, let's say it was a dollar, two dollars, whatever it is, the gentleman raised a really good point that, you know, we left the genie out of the bottle. So any sort of new fee at this point is going to be problematic to the community and to the residents. So in order to accomplish what I think you're getting at, is what type of phased-in approach that Happy could provide, maybe it's a one dollar a month over, I don't know, a couple months, two dollars a month every couple months, to get us to the point where you're made whole over the course of a certain amount of time, you would probably need to utilize a continued amount of reserves up until you build up to that point, because your expenditure level is going to continue the same. So Happy, if Happy is able to provide a couple of those options, phasing in, let's say, a couple dollar increase over the course of, you know, every few months or so, some options that the council can say, okay, what's one, you know, two dollars a month for, you know, the first, I don't know, every quarter, up until you get to a certain dollar amount, and then utilizing the difference with reserves, until you get up to that full dollar amount. If the council directed those types of scenarios, I'm certain that Happy could provide a couple options to the council, that gets to what Roy said about giving some council direction after you've seen some options. Does that make sense to the council here?
Makes a lot of sense.
I would just also add one other thing. In order to approve the admin fee, the admin fee itself has to be approved by council.
Sure.
Right? So that, just a kind of a reminder, the admin fee was never approved. So when Anthony brought all those materials, we would need to bring those materials back to council, that lays out the reasonable estimate of the cost of the service, and that fee would have to be approved by council, and then the mitigation measures can then be approved by council. So it's kind of a two-step process. It can all be done in the same night, but the first step would have to be the approval of the admin fee in order to get to that, that next step, because it has to be approved by resolution.
Thank you.
So Happy, are you good with the direction and the ideas and the options? Okay, perfect.
And so, one question, how long before that could be done and be brought back? I mean, in a magical world, what would be the earliest that could be brought back? Because the sooner we can address this issue, you know, the better, the way.
I don't know your capacity, so I mean, I'll leave that up to you. I would just say the request would be as soon as possible. Obviously, we're having city manager turnover, which is not going to help with all of staff's time, just again, forty-five thousand dollars bleeding every month. We have to be mindful of that, so just whatever you've got as soon as you can, and then we'll take it from there.
So Happy, if it works, or if it, Councilmember, if it works for the council, the latest would be the second meeting in March. If the staff can do it before March, great. I think to your point, though, every month that goes by, you're going to have to make up with that, with either additional reserves or a larger increase, you know, to residents. And then with what Roy said about the timing of this, obviously getting council direction, having staff bringing back stuff, that's going to take time. So if Happy's good with a second meeting in March at the latest, if he can do a first meeting in March, great. If not, deadline, second meeting in March.
Thank you. Mr. Santos, are we going to need to have any formal motion for any of this?
Direction is okay, but if council wants to make a motion, you can't. But I think staff has the, has the direction.
Okay. Before we move on from this item, I do want to just comment, I know I just opened Pandora's box, I'm well aware of that, and there's going to be a lot of people that are happy with the way that I went about this, and a lot of people that are going to be super frustrated, and I thought about this a lot before, and I decided I was going to go the way I did. Just, I want to make it very clear to council, accountability is very important to me, among us, right? I'm well aware that what I just presented is very likely, and can very well end up coming right back to me, and honestly, I'm glad that that's the case, because it forces me to step up and do my job the right way, and I hope that you all feel that whether or not you agree with the way I went about this, I am going to be super aggressive about making sure that we're moving in the right direction amongst each other. Again, I think it's up to us to hold each other accountable, and I ask that you do the same of me, to move this city forward. I will never reject critical criticism, as long as it's coming from a place of professionalism and respect. And I do want to say one thing to the staff and to the public as well. I don't know the details as well as anybody might, still learning the history, things have been very ugly at this dais, lack of accountability, council members always haven't been open to being questioned or criticized, and they've taken drastic action if that's ever happened to them. If you ever feel like you need to tell me something, if you think I'm not doing my job well, you think I could be doing something better, I didn't think through something the way I should have, you are always more than welcome to come up to me individually and let me know. I will never, ever respond in a retaliatory fashion to anybody that has honest, critical, constructive feedback, good or bad. And I want to make that very clear. And if there's ever a situation where you feel that way about me or another councilman, where you feel like you don't have anybody to go to, assuming legal means are met, you are more than welcome to have that conversation with me. I really want that to be the standard going forward. I don't think our standards have been good enough in the past, and that's why we're facing so many issues with development and infrastructure, name whichever one you want. And so I'm going to work to hold you guys accountable, I ask that you do the same of me, and that we move the city where it needs to go.
And so, well, thank you for that, and then, but before we move from this item, I think there was another question, and I'm not sure if it was answered or not, in regards to direction for that meeting that you guys want to have, whether or not a legal, we, whether or not majority- you guys want to have, whether or not a legal, we, whether or not majority of council is okay to have legal present. My thought is, I think it would be beneficial to make sure no one gets in trouble to have legal present. And then again, but, you know, I think it would be too much to ask, it's like, because I know he comes from Fresno and he needs gas money. It's not cheap, you know?
It could be a phone conference, doesn't matter, doesn't have to be in person.
Okay, so, but from my perspective, I think it would be beneficial to have legal be part of the conversation. But, you know, I'm also trying to be mindful of cost, you know, but then again, it's, it could be an investment in the future of the city of Livingston, so I'm okay with that. And I, and I would recommend it.
Again, like I mentioned earlier, I think the mayor, Potem, has every right to represent his perspective as he feels needed. And I also don't want to pay for Roy's gas money, so if conference call is fine, I'm more than happy to have that conversation.
I'm good with that, too.
All right, so no gas money, conference call? Okay. All right. Next, we have item number 15, consideration of a resolution appointing a member to fill the city council vacancy as a result of councilmember elect Rodrigo Espinoza's resignation and discuss the city treasure vacancy. So we have two separate items. Should we discuss both of them separately as 15A and 15B? Just for conversation purpose?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so let's do 15A, which will be the discussion to fill the, fill the city council vacancy. I'm not sure who wants to take this. Legal, Monica?
We received, we received one application within the 30-day, well, not even the 30-day, within the timeline that you guys have requested. We received one which was from Mr. Wallace. We received a second application from Ms. Soto after the, after that timeline. However, council has the option of accepting the application and take into consideration. Also, council has the option to either appoint the applicant or ask any member present here to see if anyone is interested in the city council seat or move the item to a special meeting before February 7th.
And the reason the meeting would need to take place on or before February 7th is that's when our 60-day time period for making an appointment runs. So as Monica said, the council does have, they're not required to, but the council has the authority to consider any individual who wants to be appointed or to stick to the timelines that were previously set.
Yes, go ahead.
My bad. Two questions, one from Mr. Santos. If there's no appointment made by February 7th, that automatically triggers a special election?
That's my understanding of the code, yes.
Okay, and this was mentioned, I can't remember if this was mentioned on the dais or not, but I know for a fact this has been mentioned. We will have the opportunity to ask the applicant's questions, is that still a go?
Yes, council can still ask, ask applicants any questions.
Okay, I would like to do that, unless you guys have any...
Do we need to see if we're going to consider all applicants or only that, all by the deadline?
So, at this point, it's just the, the motion is to, well, not the motion, I'm sorry, the items is consideration of a resolution to appoint a member to fill the city council vacancy. But I don't, and I think, to answer your question, probably the conversation is, it could be anything, it could be any of the options.
Yeah, but I believe the council said that 21st is the date to file. If he didn't meet that deadline, then other residents say, I was going to file too, but oops, it was the 22nd, I didn't realize that. So it would be unfair to others in saying, well, you know, we're going to go accept it, but if they, everybody thought we were going to accept it, then we might have had other people file too. So I think the direction was given, everybody knows what the date was, and we should just stick with the people that filed on, on the, on the date.
So, but as a council, we also have the option to not follow that, and we can actually appoint anyone sitting here right now that didn't even submit an application if the majority of council decides to do so.
I understand, but I'm just stating how I'm saying, okay?
Got it? Thank you. So counsel, any other comments or questions before I go off a public comment? So, Councilmember O'Paul, you had two questions before I forget?
We can go to public comment first, but I would like to ask the applicants a couple of questions, yeah?
Okay. All right, so this time I will go off a public comment, 1112. Anyone on the phone? Here and now, coming back into the chamber, any public comment in the chamber?
I, counsel, I agree with the vice mayor. I think that, you know, we're applying on time. It's always the case in anything, any application, any city application. You know, if somebody applies for a job in the city, are you going to take applications after the date? No, city manager's going to reject them. And I think you have a authority to respect that from the public. So I think that you shouldn't take in any applications or otherwise open it up again. I don't think it's fair to the public as stated. So I think that you should only interview people that applied or otherwise open it up again, you know, so, my opinion, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional comments, citizen comment in the chamber at this time?
Mayor, counsel, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that anybody needs. I thought I was pretty straightforward in my app. Just for one clarification, it doesn't mean I'm more qualified than Ms. Soto or not. However, we both had permission to use Alex McCabe as a reference. However, I have a text message, I'm more than happy to provide it, have Monica verify it was from him to me, and I think the better to choose you since you submitted your proper timeframe. And that was from one of your old council members, like he has a pretty good following in the city, and that is what he texted to me, and that was just his opinion. The mayor and I have had some big differences, and when you and I talked one-on-one and we discussed them. We also had another meeting one time when I first got nominated, and we went through, and we each had our opinions. We're never going to agree, okay? There's things we will on, there's some we will not. It's, it's a weird situation, and I knew when I got in it, the council was split 2-2, and I was going to be the odd man out. I agreed with you on some things, I disagreed on others. And then you and I had that talk back there and we dashed it out, we went over it. I still say I'm more than qualified, it's up to the council to make that decision, you only have the two. First decision is, did she put it in in time? Why did she wait so long? My feeling is she waited so long only to see who else put in other than me, if anybody did. I don't know if that's true, we'd have to ask her. I've never responded to any of her comments online. I've had a couple I thought of and I just let it drop. The biggest one that probably disturbed her is when I mentioned, did she or did she not live in the city limits for the whole term? And I made it while she was on the dais, and she said she did. I never brought it up again, to my knowledge, in closed session, and I never brought it up again in public, except maybe possibly once. Now, I would have had the opportunity to go back and see what was decided. I never did. I took her at her word then. That's, so, any questions that anybody wants to ask? I had a bunch of little notes that I had, what my priorities would be, and I'm more than willing to share depending whatever the council decides. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Wallace?
Yeah, Mr. Wallace, do you want to stay at the microphone, please? Are you okay with answering the questions right now?
Sure. I'm here, you're here.
So, Mr. Wallace, piggyback off of a point you made, you mentioned you've had your differences with the mayor, obviously you had no issue saying that publicly. This is something that's actually been insinuated to me by members of the community. Similar to me, you have been accused of being politically aligned only with Mr. Samra and Mr. Roth. As you know, the two of them both backed me in the election, have been mentors to me, and so a lot of people said, oh, you're never going to vote against them, et cetera. And I made it very clear to the community that I'm going to vote my conscience, whether or not I'm right, we'll find out in the aftermath. And I'd ask the same of you, are you going to vote your conscience on every item?
Definitely, and I did last time. That's why I've had to ask questions. I didn't go back and want to review what happened in the past. I want to hear it, I want to know about it, but I want to be able to make sure it makes sense to me. And just like the argument you've just spent 20, 25 minutes of our time on, when Gilton made that presentation, it got, that was probably one of the worst city council meetings for the public. It was probably the most misunderstood that ever went on for the public to understand the franchise fee. I don't think 10 people understood it after we've, they've hashed it out. It was very confusing the way it was presented, and then it got talked about, talked about. It was just crazy. But no, I have no money invested, you know, you read posts online, you know, follow the money trail. I had no, I campaigned with nobody, I paid for my own signs, put them up. I had two options to run, and a lot of people asked me, what did I, why didn't I run for where, mayor? I'm not qualified, I didn't think I was. Why didn't I run for my council seat? That was a tough one, because I had some other issues going on at home. Without going, I researched the Merced County Board of Education for the District Four versus the city clerk. I had numerous meetings with Monica before I even put my name in for that officially to make sure it wouldn't interfere with her on what she was doing. Is anything, if I had to come in and help shred, if I had a couple hours, okay, can I help you close up? And a perfect example of that would be this meeting tonight. What would prevent me, once we go into, go back into closed session, she goes home. Do I know how to lock the building up and turn the stuff off now? Yes, because she's taught me and Martha's taught me. Would she have to stay? No, because once you come back out of closed session, it's over with. Would that help her, save her some time and effort? Of course. So that was my number one goal. I didn't know what Mr. Espinoza was, I researched the incumbent that was running for the same education district, and I just thought I could beat him. Now, in hindsight, I thought Mr. Espinoza would have taken the city council seat, okay? If I'd have gone out and campaigned more into San Donella, some of those other areas would have been a lot closer. I just, I knew there was a vulnerability there in that vacancy, and I didn't know who, which way Mr. Espinoza would go. And I didn't know until he officially resigned. Since then, am I worried about Measure L? Yes. We've approved it, okay? You mentioned tonight, 18 months. Well, wait, we don't have 18 months, we've already gone through some of them, okay? What are we going to do? Okay, how much of this equipment do we currently own? What is the status of it? Is it certified? Is it outdated? Are we going to go for one fire station? Okay, but eventually you're going to need two. Okay, what does our staffing level go? The state likes three, we get away with two, population's going to keep growing. We're building more apartments, and I've mentioned in my original notes, that what are we doing with our schools? Okay? We have an educator here, another educator, what is our level? Now, from me talking, there's just citizens in the town, not anybody on the board or anybody we're connected to the schools. What is our capacity? Well, I've been told four or five years ago, they built enough because there was enough money, they built extra rooms, they get their other capacity, there's no problem for four or five years. Well, okay, that sounds good today, but wait, four or five years ago, do we have enough? We're building a lot of apartments right now, okay? Get water, all right, they should build into the system. Infrastructure, we're building these apartments, we're going to have more people, more children. Where are these people going to spend their money? We don't have the infrastructure for it. Yeah, they're going to use our fast food restaurants and possibly convenience our markets. But how many of these people that are going to live in these apartments are going to take their dollars and go 10, 12 miles north or south? How are we going to get them here? I had to talk to Jackie the other day because even though we saw that presentation on the Rexplex, it was, I missed the exact date, when that, how much, when is that money due? When do we got to have that done? Well, it's December 28. Well, we, you know, I don't want to be talking about it in '27 halfway through the year. We need to be thinking it now. When is the last presentation we've had from MCAG in this chambers, open to the public, about the H train? Where is our status on it? When is it coming? Okay? What have we done to get people to park their cars there and get out of their cars and spend money there before they get on the train or when they come back? Has anybody thought of that? Okay? Do we want to be another San Donella? No. Do, is our truck stop sufficient for our traffic? No, but could we stand another? Well, there's one in the works. Where, but exactly, how many jobs is it going to bring into the city? I think we're missing that infrastructure. I don't know how else to say it, and I'll get off my bandwagon, you ask me what else you want. I'm sorry. I talk with my mouth and my brain sometimes doesn't catch up with it. Chris, we may need that fishing president you got at this rate.
Only one more question. Are you committed to holding yourself, myself, and the rest of the council accountable as needed?
And I told you that once before, yes.
Okay.
For those that don't know, Councilmember O'Paul reached out to me and wanted to have a one-on-one conversation, and I let him record it, and he asked me a lot of questions, and I answered every one. Whether or not he was happy with them, I don't know, that will be determined tonight or whenever.
I would like to clear the record, I did not record it digitally.
You did, you asked me and I gave you permission.
I did not record audio or video, I did take notes, and I came with questions pre-prepared. So, thank you.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you. Any additional citizen comments in the chamber? Ms. Soto, do you want to, you want to have the opportunity to answer questions from Mr. O'Paul?
I don't answer questions, because I'll answer questions. However, I want to include in the public comment, I mean, Mayor Kapal and, or Mayor Potem and Rodrigo back there, offering up, don't accept the application. Okay, that's pretty fair, okay? It was late. Plain and simple, it was late. But the other option was to nominate someone randomly off the street in this building that have the, had the intent of running without an application. that have the, had the intent of running without an application. So, considering that you had other options far worse than mine being a couple days late, but believe me, my intention here is to serve the community. Unlike other past directions from previous council members was slightly different. So, my reason for running for council again is to, I think I, I was at a good point when I didn't run for council seat. I was on top, okay? Me feeling that council is going in a, in a positive direction with good leadership. But the more pushback that I began to see at the end of some council meetings was different. And many of the attitudes, the aggressiveness, the harassment, manipulation, it's still And I, for one, don't intend to be part of holding the city back because there are other things on a personal agenda. So, with that, thank you for consideration, allowing me to come up to the lectern. My application was late.
And just real quick, if I can add something to this, you know, this council can actually not even consider any of the, both applications, and it can actually consider anybody here that is sitting right here right now if council decides to say, "Is there anyone available, is there anyone right here right now that wants to, that want to show interest to, for this position?" This council--
It'll be me.
Yeah. This council can also do that. So, yes, you know, just like we did earlier with the other two items in regards to the recreation, in regards to the planning, you know, it was something that was not on the agenda, but this council can have, can make that decision by majority of vote and do as one of the options, or appoint someone that, turn in the application, consider appointing someone that is actually, you know, sitting here now, that didn't even turn in an application, or continue this item until before--
In two days.
Two days, before Friday. So, council can, can do that as well. So, I just want to be clear on that. Council, is there anything else you wanted to add, or council, you have any questions?
Obviously, Ms. Soto's application was late, but again, legally, she's still allowed to present herself as an applicant, well, not, maybe not as an applicant, but a candidate to be considered. And so, just out of respect for that, obviously, you came tonight and you stayed through. I'll just ask the same two questions I asked Mr. Wallace. One, are you committed to voting your conscience, no matter what anybody else is asking you to do? And two, are you committed to holding the rest of the council accountable, including yourself?
Yes, to your question number one, I will vote my conscience. I will speak how I need to on the dais, whether it's to the public, previous elected and current elected. So, to your question number two, I will hold other elected accountable. However, if you go back, you would have heard Mayor Protem Samra say that elected can't hold other elected, can't tell them what to do. But we can't tell them what to do. But we're in positions of leadership where we can present our ideas in a way that is safe in a chamber that is open to ideas that will benefit the city as a whole. So, yes, I will hold others accountable. And to our elected city clerk, he is still our elected city clerk, and he did bring up some items from the past that he, that even Mayor Moran had addressed. And I'm not sure what stemmed from behind that because I do know that I had conversations with legal. But I do know that that could have been an item that was pushed by previous county supervisor as well as the Protem and other members and residents of the city of Livingston. I do, and I have always been a resident. And this is Livingston. I advocate for Livingston, and I will make sure that it's heading in the direction that you yourself want it to go.
Council, is there any other questions?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one more thing?
Sure. So, just, just to be clear, this is, I'm allowing you to come back as a candidate for the vacancy. Yes, thanks.
One quick thing. Monica, I'm going to put you on the spot. Are you a member of the California City Clerks Association?
Yes.
Okay. It's an association that tells what city clerks to do, how much training they have to do. This, as of September 26 of last year, there's 478 cities that, in the state of California. There's 154 of those that elect their city clerks. Well, if you pull their list off their website and you look at Livingston, they say it's an appointed position. However, it respond, it is responsible to nobody, doesn't report to anybody. If you dig deeper into them, if they were appointed, they report to a city manager or a deputy city manager, or they don't, they're not responsible to anybody, which doesn't make sense. There's a few cities, Dixon is one, that I researched, they were going to go to an election. They did not because they had an employee that had worked in the city for over 15 years. That person got elected to the city clerk. Yes, they had the knowledge. They knew what they were doing. A city, what does the city clerk do? And it's one you need to, this council needs to get appointed and responsible to. Document and record management, meeting coordination, election responsibility, licensing and permits. Councilwoman Soto always complained to win them, but it was not brought forward years ago. It should have been. Public communication, skills and qualifications, path to becoming a silly, a city clerk. I'll never get certified for it. It's a long courses and a lot of time and effort. It's just not, it's not feasible. Talking to people within the city, do they think the city clerk should be appointed? And who's, do you think the city clerk job should be appointed and responsible to the city manager or to the city council? I do. Yeah, this job needs to be done. It needs to be done correctly. Okay? You have somebody that can do it. She's doing it. She's done it for the last number of years. It just doesn't make sense for this not to be one of the things that was changed in our code. And it's, like I say, it's funny that they, some people that are appointed, they don't, they're not even required to talk to anybody. They don't report to anybody. Any, some of the elected ones do not either. That's a mistake. That city clerk is responsible to somebody. Monica answers to somebody. Chris, into this council. It's just one of those funny things, but it's one of those things that I would push for. It need, it needs to go away. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. And Ms. Soto had brought it up before. I don't know why it never got pushed. It got forgotten. It needs to be done. I know the standard, well, we got other things going on. We're not looking, we might have to change everything in the city codes. Well, this is one that needs to get updated. It needs to get fixed. Another, use your own expression, don't kick it down the board. Let's get something, make a decision.
Thank you. Council, is there any additional questions at this time from either one of them? No? Just make, so, public comment is still open. Is there any additional citizen comments at this time in the chamber? C N, closing the public comment at 11:36, bringing it back to the dais. So, council, we have before us, and we have different options, whatever the majority decides
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move, to make a motion to appoint Mr. Wallace as the council member.
So, we have a motion on the floor, and I do want to say, you know, just to respond because I think I was, I was mentioned, and, and yes, I did, I, I did have, actually, I think I had meetings with, you know, a couple of meetings. I'm not sure if they were before he was appointed to, to the previous council seat. But, you know, it's, it's, it's just having the experience, I did have the experience to work with Mr. Wallace for probably about five months or so, five, six months as a member of the, of the council. And, you know, and I think like with, with everybody else here, you know, we always agree to disagree. I, I think that's normal because I also believe, and I said it before, if I ever agree with everybody else here 100% of the time, then, then I'm not doing my job or something is wrong. And, and it's good, and it's part of having good conversations. I don't think there's anything abnormal of just not agreeing. But one of the things that I do agree with is, and I want to make sure that the public understands that, that I, I will never support anything illegal. I will never support anything that, that goes against what we currently have as a city code. If city code is out of date and it's, and it's, and needs to be updated, then that, then that's council's responsibility to do that. But even though I might not like sometimes what, what is currently on city code, I will follow the law every single time. And I would not agree with anybody, you know, whether it's, I don't have to agree 100% of the time with anybody on open session or closed session, just because, just because it's politically correct, you know, and what people are going to think. Once again, I'm going to do what I think is best for the majority of the community. And unfortunately, I would not be able to support Mr. Wallace this time around. So, if there's no additional comment, I do have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I will second it.
So, we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Roth, second by Mayor Protem. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Ubo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
No.
Motion passes by a vote of 3-1.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So, next, we have the Oto Office, right, Monica?
As soon as he gets sworn in.
As soon as he gets sworn in.
Okay. Okay. So, you will repeat after me. I--
I--
Say your name.
Robert Sherman Wallace.
Do solemnly swear--
Do solemnly swear.
--that I will support and defend--
That I will support and defend.
--the Constitution of the United States--
The Constitution of the United States.
--and the Constitution of the state of California--
The Constitution of the state of California.
--against all enemies--
Against all enemies.
--foreign and domestic--
Foreign and domestic.
--that I will bear true faith--
That I will bear true faith--
--and allegiance--
Allegiance--
--to the Constitution of the United States--
Constitution of the United States.
--and the Constitution of the state of California--
Constitution of the state of California.
--that I will take this obligation freely--
I take this obligation freely.
--without any mental reservation--
Without any mental reservations.
--or purpose of evasion--
And per se saving it.
--purpose of evasion--
Purpose of evasion.
--and that I will--
And that I will--
--well--
Well.
--and faithfully--
And faithfully--
--discharge the duties--
Discharge the duties.
--upon which--
Upon which--
--I am about to enter.
I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
No, wait a minute. Mr. Mayor, he did not raise his hand.
I didn't have my hand up.
So, we have to do this over now.
It's like, I started to, I go, okay.
We have to do this with our hand raised, so.
All right. Raise, raise your right hand. I--
I, Robert of Sherman Wallace.
--do solemnly swear--
Do solemnly swear.
--that I will support and defend--
That I will support and defend--
--the Constitution of the United States--
The Constitution of the United States.
--and the Constitution of the state of California--
And the Constitution of the state of California.
--against all enemies--
Against all enemies.
--foreign and domestic--
Foreign and domestic.
--that I will bear--
That I will bear--
--true faith--
True faith.
--and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States--
To the Constitution of the United States.
--and the Constitution of the state of California--
The Constitution of the state of California.
--that I will take this obligation freely--
I take this so freely.
--this obligation freely. Obligation--
And obligation.
--without any mental reservation--
Without any mental reservations.
--or purpose of evasion--
Or purpose of--
Evasion--
Evasion.
--and that I will--
And that I will.
--well--
Well.
--and faithfully discharge--
And faithfully--
Discharge--
Discharge the duties.
--upon which--
Upon which--
--I'm about to enter.
About to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
For the record, I would, I would like to keep my seat.
Are we keeping the age differences here now or what?
All right. So, that's 15A. Now, we have 15B, which is a discussion of the city treasurer vacancy. I'm not sure who wants to take this.
On the city treasurer vacancy, we received no applications.
So, there, I mean, I guess it doesn't hurt to provide direction, to provide another 30 days to bring it back along with the other.
Yeah. May I comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Perfectly okay with putting the application out again. I, I won't say their name just because I forgot to ask them before tonight's meeting if it was okay if I mentioned their name. However, there is at least one member of the community who reached out and said that they would be willing to do the work of the city treasurer. However, they had certain stipulations that aren't necessarily, would not need to be written down, but kind of understood about not wanting to be involved in political decisiveness or being required to show up to meetings, things of that sort, and potentially not carrying out the entire function of the city treasurer as defined in the municipal code. So, I did want to make that clear, that an applicant may be reaching out, however, they had a very specific ask, and that we may need to evaluate that ask if we decide to appoint them at the treasurer's seat.
Mr. Mayor, we may have to look into this issue. This may default by code to a special election because it wasn't, an appointment wasn't able to be made within the statutory time period.
If we get it done before the 7th or by the 7th, are we good to go?
No. So, the, the reason why we had for the council vacancy till the 7th is because it's based on the date when the, when Councilmember-elect Espinoza resigned. This one would go from the date of the original-- This one would go from the date of the original election, and when the election results were certified. So, I think that runs today, right, Monica?
Yeah, so, it was done the last meeting.
I think it expires today, because the results were ver...
No.
When the results were verified on...
Because Rodrigo Espinoza resigned before.
No, that's what I'm saying, that's why it was different, because the treasurer became vacant the day the results were certified.
So, that one has more time.
How much time do we have? Because special election is $100,000. So, what are we at then?
We'll have to bring this item back to the council. We have to look into the issue of whether it defaults, because we don't have anybody to appoint tonight.
Councilmember Upal, you said you had spoken with somebody that was interested?
Yes, I did receive communication from somebody that was interested. They're not in the room tonight. Is it legally, are we...
Well, we have a precedent where we, at one time, appointed a city clerk with a conversation with the council member, so I think we do have a precedent there. If you wish to make the motion, we can.
Mr. Santos, if we motion to appoint somebody that's not here, one, is that allowed? Yeah, is that allowed?
Technically speaking, you can make a motion to appoint somebody who's not here. There's nothing legally preventing you from doing that. The, it would be a conditional appointment, because you're still going to need to verify that they meet the requirements under the municipal code. And then also, they need to come in and actually accept the position and be sworn. So, the appointment in and of itself would technically still just be conditional.
But it would, it would allow us to avoid a special election?
I think we have a reasonable legal argument that it would, yes.
Now, my only concern is, let's just say said individual doesn't decide to take the seat. As soon as they say no, are we automatically in special election range?
No, I think we would argue that, and I think we have a reasonable argument, that the seat now became vacant again, because the person declined the seat. Said another 60-day time period would begin.
To be, I mean, I don't... Is it better if we potentially appoint somebody in the audience that we know will decline? Are we running around legal issues there, so we have time to talk to someone? I just, I, we can't just go to special election. Like, that's a waste of money, complete waste of money. So, anything that we can do to avoid that, I'm on board. I just, out of respect for the individual, I would like to avoid.
What I would say is that counsel, if there's someone present tonight that wishes to put their name in for appointment, they can do so tonight, and the council can consider that.
I would say, is Rodrigo still here? Oh.
No.
Juan Maria is probably at, and...
Well, Rodrigo would not be able to, because he's already in the...
Actually, because he doesn't have a voting power, it would not be a conflict with his position. Because you have to have a voting power.
Ms. Soto, Mr. Upal, are you...
Actually, the conversation was that a city clerk would not have a, because I spoke with the MCOE folks. Unless you are a, you have a direct vote, where you can, you can have a conflict, is when it's a conflict.
My, when Mr. Wallace had that question, my advice was to go seek a legal opinion from the AG's office on that issue.
I have a question for the attorney. Roy, do, under the municipal code and the State of California laws, do all closed-session meetings, can they be recorded? Yes or no, and why not? I thought the municipal codes, the State of California says they can be, but the access to them would have to be very, but there's nothing specifically that I could find prohibiting them from being recorded. So, in other words, it's a he said, you said, I said, six months ago. Will you remember the subject? Yes. Do you remember exactly what you said? There is no record of that. Now, is that something that is true or not true?
Mr. Wallace, I mean, legal, is that something that goes within, falls within the agenda, or is that something that needs to be talked about separately?
No, but I can, I can touch base with Mr. Wallace on that issue. I'll follow up with you on that issue.
To bring us back, we have two residents that live in the city, Ms. Soto, Mr. Upal. Are either of you comfortable with putting your name in the hat for city treasurer position tonight? I do want to remind you that if we don't appoint anybody tonight, the city's going to end up wasting over $80,000 on a special election for a position that nobody wants.
My question is just, if circumstances change going forward, for myself, if I was to put my name in the hat like you suggested, is an option today? If circumstances for me change, and I can no longer fulfill the duty to the role, can I, is that, is resigning possible at any time, or how does that work? Because I don't know too much about the duties, or how it would work, the process.
My apologies, I was talking with the deputy city clerk. Can you repeat your question?
My question was just, if I do put my name in the hat today, if my circumstances change going forward, and I'm unable to fulfill the role, and I need to resign for any reason, is that possible at any time, or is...
Correct. All you would have to do is tender your letter of resignation to the city clerk's office, and that would be sufficient to resign. You could do so at any time. So, you could put your name in, look at the position, see if it fits within your schedule. If for some reason it doesn't, or something comes up, then you would, there's nothing legally prohibiting you from resigning at that time.
Perfect. If that's the case, then if it's, if the council wants to consider my, me for the position, I'm willing to put my name in for that application.
Counsel, so, we have a...
Well, do we have to verify? Yeah, so you can't do it. There you go. Yeah, okay, I was going to say that.
It'd be conditional verification that he's a city resident and a registered voter within the city.
Mr. Semer, I'm surprised, you've been here for 22 years. You should already know that.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that we do have to do a verification. It can be pending, you know, so, and also, it can be pending, because it buys us time. If he declines, then we can go back and reopen up.
Yeah, we would just do the swearing-in after the, after it's been verified that he meets the requirements under the municipal code.
Okay.
So, he wouldn't be able to be sworn in today?
No, because we need to verify that he meets the requirements before we do the swearing.
All right, so, there, so we have a candidate for the city treasurer vacancy. Name?
W-I-N-D-E-R. W-I-N-D-E-R.
Okay, so...
Mr. Mayor, really quickly.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, that's actually what I'm going to ask right now, is, so I have nothing but positive things to say about the handsome gentleman, that just approached the dais, bigger, stronger, faster, more reasonable version of myself, however, is my biological brother, and so, I don't know if I'm allowed to vote on the item, and I'll let the attorney take it from there.
I would recommend that you recuse yourself on, no, recuse yourself on that one. So, you would have to step down from the dais while that item is being considered. You can step back into the closed-session chambers, if you would like why that item is further discussed.
Can I recuse myself at this point?
Yes.
Wow, this is...
For the record, Councilmember Upal has stepped down from the dais.
All right, so, we have a candidate. Mr. Upal, so, does anybody want to make a motion at this time to consider Mr. Upal for city treasurer vacancy?
I'll make the motion to appoint Herwinder Upal to the treasurer.
So, we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Roth. Is there a second?
I will make the motion to appoint Herwinder Upal to, as a, I will second that motion.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Roth.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Wallace.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Semer.
Yes.
Mayor Moran.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of 4-0.
All right.
Be sure to bring your utility bill and a registration vote, okay, so...
All right, so, with that said, that is our last item in regular session. We do have an item in closed session, so I...
Mr. Mayor, I meant, can we, it is midnight. I'd like to, if you can reschedule for a continuation to tomorrow, the next day, because some of us have to get up really early to go to work. I mean, I don't mind once in a while, but this is three midnights in a row. You know, it becomes very difficult the next day.
Just a consideration, we have staff, city staff here waiting, and I would feel really bad to let her know that she waited until 11:59 PM, and for us to move this meeting forward for probably not this week, but next week, and then, this is for the, I was just looking at it, and remember, this is for the interim city manager position. Mr. Lopez's last day with us is on Monday. And so, I would, I would, I would, I'm hoping, and I'm thinking that it probably wouldn't take too long, you know, for us, or for, you know, to reconsider, but that's my, my comment at this time.
I am okay with doing a continuation to tomorrow. We can do that, or to another day, but I'm sorry, but I can't, we can't guarantee that it'll be a quick discussion. So, I would strongly recommend that we put it off to another date.
So, for this, we would need a council direction?
If the council were to continue that item, we'd need a motion and a second.
And then, and then also, since this is a closed-session item, we would have to, actually, then we have to pay, well, not necessarily, but we also need to have legal in attendance. But, so, I would rather not leave it for later, and just continue it for tonight, but let's just...
You guys can have the meeting, but I will not attend it. Thank you.
Counsel?
I don't, I don't think anybody wants to be here right now, but I do agree with the mayor on this one. It's late, folks stayed, and obviously, we want to go home earlier than not, but this is a very timely issue. We don't know how much, if we're even going to be able to get a meeting on the calendar with everybody available in the next three days, and I do think we should just finish the job tonight, and just get it done. I take no pleasure in having to wake up early tomorrow either, but I think it is what it is at this point, and we should just get it done.
Mr. Mayor, the same thing for me. We got staff here. I don't think it's fair to keep them here all night and then have to reschedule. Let's just finish it up. It shouldn't take that long.
Okay, so, meeting adjourned, and we're going to adjourn to closed session, and we'll be back to report out. 12:01. Twelve oh one.
Hello everyone, we're back from closed session at 12:48 and then we have report out.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, no reportable actions at this time.
Alright, so thank you, so meeting adjourned at 12:48, good night.